Welcome, everybody, to the Internet Society Board Meeting number 187 here in March of 2025. Thanks, everybody, for coming. We have a brief regret from Victor Korsing this morning, who will not be able to join us for the first session because of an unavoidable conflict. I believe we have no other apologies for the meeting. Is there anybody who needs to declare a conflict of interest in relation to this morning's agenda? Okay. That's great news, and I think that brings us to our first item of business, which is to welcome Flavio, who is going to speak to us on behalf of the Czech. Good morning, Flavio.
Hi, good morning. I would love to... I cannot start my video. Apparently, I'm not able to. Could you maybe enable my video so that you can see me?
The staff are working on that?
Yeah, okay, yeah. So I prepared and sent some slides. Maybe someone could... From staff could share the slides so that we can start then my presentation to you?
Yes, they're doing that now. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We can see the slides now.
Oh, but I did not... I do not see them. I'm not able to see the slides, yeah?
Okay, give us just a second, Flavio, sorry. And Flavio, you should be able to turn on your own video.
Nope. Again, a message you cannot start your video because the host has stopped it.
Give us just a second.
Yeah. Good, at least I see my slides now. I'm sorry that you cannot see me, but let's start like that while what staff try to solve the problem. So, thank you for having me here. So I'm the new Chair of the Steering Committee of the Chapter Advisory Call and Council, and this is the traditional report from the Czech to the Board of Trustees. So, next slide, please. Yeah, this is the members of the Steering Committee of the Czech that have been elected starting in January this year. So we have Nicolas Chagny from the France chapter, Clara Patricia Munoz from the Colombia chapter, Joel Templeman from the Canada Manitoba chapter, Winthrop Yu from the Philippines chapter, Patricia Peña from the Chile chapter, Katarina Gavorgian from the Armenia chapter, and the three members that have been then nominated to the leadership team of the Steering Committee: Anna Amomo-David from Namibia chapter, who is the Secretary, Eba Sayed from the Egypt chapter, who is the Vice Chair, and myself, Flavio Wagner, from the Brazil chapter, have been nominated as Chair of the Steering Committee. So we started January our terms. Only myself, Heba, and Katarina were already in the Steering Committee last year. Yeah, next slide, please. So we started by trying to prepare and propose to the Czech in the Steering Committee an action plan and priorities for this year. And with we understand that the main priority for the Czech this year should be to help create more meaningful opportunities for engagement of chapters and members, and of course, with very strong engagement and coordination with the staff. So there are many ideas that the staff is putting forward to implement those opportunities for chapters and members to engage. Regional calls, community days, in-person workshops when possible, ISOC at, for instance, ICANN events, or ISOC at IETF and other such face-to-face events, and also opportunities for members and chapters to engage in projects that are being conducted by ISOC, depending on topics, of course. And in parallel to that, at the same time, it's our priority to enhance communication and cooperation with both ISOC and ISOC Foundation staff, and also with you, the members of the Board of Trustees. So we will have always the regular participation of staff from ISOC and ISOC Foundation staff in our Czech calls and also in our Steering Committee calls along the year. And we would love to invite you, members of the Board of Trustees, for informal discussions on issues of mutual interest, and we can discuss and think about opportunities that we could create for those informal discussions. And of course, you would be always welcome to our Czech calls and also to our Steering Committee calls. So, next slide, please. As a consequence of those two previous priorities, we hope that chapters will be able to improve their influence and help drive internet governance policies, both locally and globally. And we also hope that ISOC strategies, priorities, and programs will have been concretely influenced by the contributions coming from the chapters and channels through the chapter's advisory council. So, next slide, please. Yeah. So, other points in our action plan and priorities for this year. First one is the revision of the Czech rules and procedures. Yeah, this comes already from last year, yeah, as a result of the requirement to clarify several actions triggered during last year's Czech activities. It has been recognized by many that it's time to review and remediate some parts of our existing Czech charter, rules, and procedures. And intention is to ensure greater clarity and far less ambiguity, if not conflict, in certain aspects of these rules as they are written, yeah? And these proposed updates, when drafted and agreed upon by the Czech, should also provide an opportunity for the Board of Trustees and the ISOC staff to be more able to take appropriate, specific, and timely action or reaction to things that may be triggered from time to time by Czech activities, including, but again, not limited to the expected degree of formality and communications pathways preferred when formal Czech advice is developed and sent to the board. And again, to be clear, the aim is greater predictability, clarity, and easy of understanding for all interested parties. So for that, a small group has been created last year already to discuss this issue and prepare a proposal, which is led by Greg Shatten from the New York chapter, also including Cheryl Londonor from Australia, former Czech Steering Committee Chair, Heba Sayed from Egypt, both former and current Czech Steering Committee Vice Chair, Olivier Crapin-Léblanc from the UK, and Eduardo Diaz from Puerto Rico. And this small group shall start their work briefly, we hope. So, the following point relates to the support of ISOC to chapters' archives. So this is a new initiative that we would discuss anyway with the staff, but we saw gladly that this is initiative that the staff itself is already starting, yeah, and you certainly remember the discussion on ISOC Live last year, and even the formal advice sent from the Czech to the board on keeping the funding for that service. In our most recent Czech call, some 10 days ago, we heard from Chris Locke about the organization's plans to build a long-term sustainable solution for managing chapter content, including video and other materials. And he emphasized the importance of creating a content archive that can grow and sustain itself, of course, with strong support from ISOC, and proposed working with the chapters to develop the solution and run the new resource. And this is very much aligned with the ideas we have for having this sustainable solution for managing chapter content. So the other point is about removing barriers for new chapters. And there, the question is that the Czech is suggesting some type of support system to be still devised for newly chartered chapters. Yeah, focus should would be on funding to support chapters formation before they are fully chartered. For instance, for local legal registration and other initial activities that are necessary to set up a charter, a chapter, yeah? Chapters' information in general struggle a lot with the lack of adequate funding and overall lack of support for their initial activities. So, and the last, but not least, yeah, one of the most important points is our issues regarding the transparency and full transparency from the Czech towards chapters and members, yeah? And so there are many ideas there, that the Czech webpage kept permanently updated with very easy-to-find links to all relevant documents, that we keep a list of our main action items, always updated and easily available to all chapter leaders, for instance, through the chapter portal, or the leader portal, yeah, in the ABS portal. All relevant Czech and Czech Steering Committee documents easily available to all chapter leaders. And of course, we have to discuss this with the chapter leaders, which are the relevant documents they think are necessary to be available either through the webpage, publicly available thus, or only to chapter leaders through the AMS portal. And also, for the sake of easy of communication and cooperation with all chapter leaders anytime, all chapter leaders can suggest topics they want the Czech to discuss. There is a live document there, which is also available to chapter leaders through the AMS portal. But of course, they can use any other means to contact us directly to suggest things that the Czech should consider in their discussions. So, next slide, please. So these were the main action items and main priorities we proposed to the Czech from the Steering Committee for this year. This slide is just for you to remember that we have this regular activity, both in the Czech and in the Steering Committee along the year. So the Steering Committee holds monthly calls. We already had two meetings in January and February. The Steering Committee leadership, so our small team, three people, and with the ISOC staff that gives us direct support, Christine and Rama. We also have at least one monthly calls. We had more than that in January, February, for starting our work. There are the full Czech quarterly calls. We already have the first one in February 25, and we have new Czech calls planned for May, September, and November. And then there is something that was proposed by the ISOC leadership, and which aligns very well to our priority of keeping very close cooperation and channels of communication with the ISOC staff leadership, which are quarterly calls, yeah, between the Steering Committee, the Czech Steering Committee, and the ISOC staff leadership. And we already had one such meeting in February. So, next slide, please. So this is then a very brief report from our first full Czech call, which was held on February 25. The first agenda item was a presentation and discussion of the proposed Czech action plan and priorities for this year, as we already presented to you. Yeah, and this sparked a very lively discussion on the documents that are relevant to be available for chapters and all this question of stronger cooperation with the staff, and the question of keeping archives of the chapters stored and available to everyone in a sustainable way. So this was well, everything well discussed during this first point of the agenda. Then we had an update on ISOC Communications Plan by Chris Locke, and in the main point there in his presentation, and that also started a very lively discussion, was on this new initiative on sustainable resource for keeping chapters' archives available, yeah, and something that would be discussed and designed together and then kept together with the interested chapters, yeah? Then we had by Jen Bird from the ISOC Foundation staff, an overview of all chapter funding opportunities that exist, the different programs, and some new modalities that have been introduced, for instance, in the chapter admin funding, and also in the small and large grants that have been a little bit modified from the beyond-the-net program. Then we had a presentation by Christine on collaboration and engagement opportunities, resources, and so on, for us working together. And this, as I mentioned before, this is very closely aligned with one of our priorities, which is to create more opportunities for chapters to engage among them, but also with the staff, both from ISOC, from ISOC Foundation, and even with the Board of Trustees. Then there was a brief report from Christine regarding the opening of the chapter's delegate list. You may remember, this was also formal advice last year. The chapter delegates' list was open until many years ago. Then it was decided that it should be kept closed only for chapter leaders. But then there was a different decision last year by the Czech that the archives of the chapter delegates' list should be opened again, and this has been implemented now in the beginning of January. And then there was a last brief report from Christine on chapter health update. Next slide, please. And the idea is that this very brief update is, will be given at every end of a full Czech calls. These are the figures we have nowadays, yeah, 120 current full chapters. There are five chapters that are still in pre- rejuvenation, and they have a deadline until the end of March to to go to rejuvenation. There are nowadays nine chapters in rejuvenation, and there is, there was a single change since the beginning of this year, which was the Somalia chapter, which came from pre- rejuvenation to rejuvenation. Yep. Next slide, please. We had, unfortunately, only 16 chapters represented in this full Czech call out of 98, which have a Czech representative appointed, yeah? So we have 120 chapters currently. 98 of them have appointed a Czech representative. Only 16 of them were present in the call. We have to think of, yeah, possibilities to increase by a large number, yeah, this attendance, yeah? Just for comparison, we had 40 chapters representative attending the previous full Czech November call, yes. We have to see why, which are the reasons for this low attendance in this first call of the year. So we were glad to see many people from ISOC and ISOC Foundation staff also attending the call, Chris Locke, Sebastian Belagamba, Christine Segasalbet, Rama Reiman, Al Gaf, and Jen Bird. And we also were very happy to see two members of the Board of Trustees attending the call, Caleb and Charles. And we thank them very much for being with us in the Czech, and we would love to see more of the Board of Trustees members attending next calls. And as I said before, we would love to open up new opportunities for this communication, for this engagement with the Board, yeah? Besides the formal advice that from time to time the Czech will send to you, would love to have more informal communication with you so that we we can share our ideas, share our thoughts for our new initiatives and discuss them, and so this really two-way communication that I think would be profitable for both the Czech and the Board of Trustees. And I think this concludes my presentation, yeah? The next slide, I think, is, yeah? So, thank you very much, and I'm open for questions, yeah?
Thank you very much.
My, yeah, now, I, no, my video is on, yeah?
Thank you very much, Flavio, for the full report. The floor is open to trustees for any questions. I had two quick ones while other people are gathering your thoughts. One is, have you seen any kind of discussion about changes with the relationship to the chapter community since opening the chapter delegates' list? And the other is for the informal communication that you mentioned. Do you think that's something where you want to continue to do that by potentially inviting chapter, sorry, inviting board members to attend Czech functions? Or is there another set of mechanisms you had in mind for that?
Yeah, from the quest, for the first question, we don't have any feedback yet to give you, so I hope we will have soon. For the second question, yeah? We did not have any concrete proposal. Would love to discuss this with you, yeah, to see which are the opportunities, of course, attending our, both the full Czech calls, quarterly full Czech calls, and our monthly Steering Committee meetings. This is a first possibility, I see, but maybe there are other opportunities, yeah? Maybe, yeah, you see, for instance, I will be in Seattle from tomorrow, yeah? I have to catch my flight in a few hours from now. And so I'm very sorry that I could not attend the meeting in person there. But I will be there in Seattle. I hope I can meet with many of you and engage in a conversation that we can together think of possibilities, how this informal communication could be possible, yeah? Maybe we could think of webinars on very specific substantive issues, yeah? On issues that are under discussion in the Board of Trustees, or issues that are of interest that have been brought to the chapter's advisory council, and then both sides could propose issues of interest for a possible webinar where we have presentations, or we have lively discussions, very open. So, we can, I think we can think of many possibilities, yeah, and I hope we can devise them together.
Thank you very much, and I certainly do see some opportunities there, similar to like the Olmac roundtable. But I also see two people in queue. Charles?
Yes, yes. I, first of all, thank you, thanks to Flavio for your presentation and report on what's been happening with Czech this year. Of course, you only have probably the first call, but I do see that a lot has been started by the Czech, and that's a good sign. Caleb and myself, we joined the call, and I find that to be very useful, I mean, to understand what Czech and many of the chapters have been, you know, what are the kind of things that they are, that they, that they worry about, or they concerned about. So a couple of points. First, I think the discussion about the rules and procedures of Czech going forward is going to be a very, very important issue. Of course, I think the board should recognize the independence of the Czech, and any reform should be bottom-up. But I think this is a very important area in order to strengthen Czech as a liaison between the chapters and the board, and also to hopefully also find more continuity in the operation of Czech so they can maximize its potential to achieve that purpose of being the liaison. And the second point I want to say is that, yes, it's very, I think it's very productive and useful for for the, for, for, for Board Trustees, or for the trustees to join informally to the Czech meetings, again, as I mentioned, to understand where things are going. And I think sometimes the problems that, the issue that why trustees are not joining the calls are probably similar to the reasons why some of the chapter leaders or the chapter delegates are not joining the calls, because of communications, because with many of us were not informed about the cause. I don't know, maybe there needs to be some formalization or ways to make sure that people are informed about it. And because typically trustees, including chapter trustees, are not chapter leaders, so we may not be in the right email list and so on. So unless we found out about it or somehow be told about it, and then we express the interest. And certainly, I mean, even for other trustees beyond the chapter trustees to be able to join the call, that would be useful. So I think maybe we should, you can consider formalizing or maybe expanding the information about the the Czech calls, maybe to the whole chapter delegate list so that they are told about it. I don't, I'm not sure right now whether that's been done, or whether it's just going out to a group of chapter leaders or the Czech, or the Czech delegates for the chapters, and only they are informed about it, and sometimes they may not communicate the same information to other delegates or other people in the chapters. So that's something I hope maybe Flavio and your committee can consider. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much, Charles, for that. Thank you again to you and Caleb for attending the meeting, yeah, the Czech call. And it's important, the question you raised, and I will check this with the staff, yeah? How is, how are the Czech calls being communicated to the various communities within ISOC, yeah? And specifically to the Board of Trustees, but also to other chapters. We know there are some problems in some chapters where the Czech representatives are not members of the board, of the chapter board, and where internal communication is not working well. So we have to try to identify such situations and then improve the communication so that all the chapters are aware of the calls and of the agenda with due time, yeah? Thank you, Charles.
Oh, one other thing I might add. If you are going to be here, when are you going to be arriving in Seattle tomorrow? I don't know whether you can catch us, the board member, on time before our meeting here ends, or maybe, you know, before dinner or something like that?
Yeah, I will be arriving at noon, exactly, at the airport, so...
So maybe we can figure out a way to, that you can stop by our meeting venue, and you can meet more of the trustees here, you know, if you're not too tired after your trip?
Yeah, thank you. I will see that, yeah. I will check with the staff. Thank you, thank you, Charles.
All right, this is Barry Leva. I'll echo both of the things that Charles said, well, all three, including the company's. But the second part of what Charles said is what I had raised my hand to say. I would, I would have been thrilled to join that meeting had I known about it. And I didn't see it posted to the chapter delegates' list. That might be because it wasn't, or it might be because the chapter delegates' list is full of, "Thanks for doing this," you know, rah rah rah. And there's, it's so busy with other stuff that there's a lot, it's hard to find the meat in there. So I certainly would appreciate if it were actually explicitly sent to the ISOC board list so that we formed, because I know I do participate in as many of the organization members' stuff as I can, because those I'm informed about. So more information from the chapters would be great. It's been something I've wanted to see for a long time, is more connection between the board and the Czech and the Olmac, because you have this advisory committee stuff at the end of your name that we would like you to advise us.
Yeah, yeah, thank you for that. I see we are very much aligned on that, and of course, this seems to be the first thing to do, it's to improve communication, yeah? So that information flows correctly from each side, and that we are aware of things that are happening, and so I will certainly check this with the staff and try to make it possible that the agenda and the timing of the Czech calls are directly communicated to the Board of Trustees.
Caleb?
Thank you. Flavio, good to see, good to have you. So quick question. You raised an issue about the health, sorry, something about attendance, and I know we've talked about this issue before at the board, but you were in the chair then. And I know ISOC is probably planning something, which I don't know about how to incentivize, but I would like to get your own direct advice to the board. What do you think that we, as the board, and you, as the Czech, can do to work together to incentivize chapters to make sure that they keep attending these meetings? Because if you don't have diversity of ideas, wealth of ideas, in one single meeting, we don't seem to be covering all the issues, and then you just be here in the corridor talks. These are the issues, these are the issues, and everything is not organized in one single forum, so this is a direct question to you. You might not be able to answer that question now, because it might look like I'm putting you on Podsport. But please reach out to and see how we can work more on incentivizing chapters to attend Czech meetings.
Yeah, yeah, thank you for the offer, yeah. Really, it seems that the Czech is not discussing things that are of interest for most of the chapters. That seems a very simple thing, yeah? If chapters are not attending the call, either there is a communication problem, that the call is not well communicated to the chapters. This is one reason, maybe. We can work on that. Yeah, the other one, maybe, I think, is the most important one. The uh we can work on that, yeah. The other one, maybe I think is the the most important one is that uh the check is not discussing issues that are of interest for most of the chapters, yeah, so. And I think if we have more opportunities for engaging with the chapters, if we use those different uh resources there, the regional calls, uh webinars, uh even uh face-to-face meetings when possible, networking possibilities and so on, that we we have more uh communication with the chapters, we can at the check understand what would the chapters love to 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 see? Uh, how could the check work in things that are uh important for the 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 chapters? How could the 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 check be the mechanism by which uh the chapters can convey things to the staff, uh to the Board of Trustees? Because I I suppose that most chapters do not know and are not used to to have this very close contact to trustees or or to the 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 senior staff. So I I think we have to create those opportunities and as as when those opportunities arise, try to understand what uh the chapters would love to see uh as the role of the check, yeah? That's, it's not only about sending formal advice on on some uh procedural things uh which are important, of course, when when this rise, but uh I think on more substantive issues that are of interest for the chapters. For the chapter sustainability, for the chapter participation in relevant projects, for instance, in meaningful connectivity or encryption or the issues that are of interest to ISO. So I I think it's a a path we have to 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 go. Uh, and I hope along this year we will have more of those opportunities uh for engagement and then understand better what the check could do for uh the chapters. And uh I I hope that the Board of Trustees can engage with us in this discussion and so that we together think of uh a better way to so the chapters feel more engaged in all those uh opportunities and also in in the Chapters Advisory Council.
Agreed.
Hi, uh, thank you for being the bridge uh between the chapters and the board. And I would like to ask from you whether you have any like upcoming initiatives regarding the interchapter collaboration? Because this was discussed a long time within the board, so are there anything like that? Interchapter collaboration?
There are, uh uh uh, there are many, many ideas that have been uh put forward by by Christine and and I would not be able maybe to give uh too many details about those opportunities, because in fact these are things that are being uh you see, there are, we can propose things from the check, but of course, uh things, uh most of them would have to be implemented with staff support, yeah? Uh, we already have the regional calls, yeah, I always attended the regional call in my region, yeah, Latin American Caribbean. And they are very useful, yeah? And uh I I see a a very healthy initiative uh from our uh regional manager, which is uh Nancy Kiroz, uh trying to to create more of these meaningful opportunities for engagement of chapters, not only administrative stuff, but really uh more uh uh in-depth discussion around uh some uh very substantive issues, yeah, and I that we have the community days, yeah, we have this uh this uh networking events at uh uh meetings like the the ICANN meeting there, there will be the ISO a networking uh event, Tuesday, I think, yeah, Tuesday evening. And so I I think the staff is thinking of that. This has been started uh very recently. We are working very close uh to Christine, yeah, uh to to discuss those opportunities. So I don't have any more concrete details to give to you right now. Uh, but we would love to hear uh suggestions as as well, yeah, from you. Yeah, on uh which kind of chapter collaboration we could implement it, yeah, we could implement, yeah? We, for, just for, to give you an example, yeah, we we have been talking here in Latin America about the kind of safe internet project for the whole region, yeah? Brazil and some other countries have a law tradition in uh programs related to safety. Yeah, internet safety, and the idea would be to expand this experience to other countries in the region. So to to create materials that are targeted at other chapters. Try to create a kind of steering committee comprising of members from different regions. The the person that gave this suggestion in the first place was Lito Ibarra, who you certainly know very well uh from from El Salvador, and he approached us at the Brazilian chapter and all some other chapters. So I think we can replicate those types of initiatives in other regions as well. Yeah.
Yeah, that's a diamond like in in, I saw some Brazilian chapters and African chapters, they have done programs for the elderly, like uh senior citizens, so we could have use this model to other chapters as well, get their support and initiatives and advisors as well, so. And in the meantime, staff also can support for that without having much effort, right? We are replicating the same model into the other chapters.
Yep. Yeah, yeah, we can take this good examples from many chapters and try to to create uh larger groups of chapters around those programs and expand the the program to other countries. I I think this is a very concrete possibility and of course, we would need some uh support from the staff and and maybe seek funding, yeah, for that uh projects and see which modalities of funding from the ISOC Foundation would apply to those uh kind of regional initiatives, yeah? But I think there are possibilities there.
Thank you very much, Flavio. I think the board uh definitely joins you in believing that there are possibilities there, given the discussion in the room today and other discussions. I think uh what we probably need to do is to continue to work with you and with the staff to to identify how to uh experiment with the different forms there. Um, we have definitely seen some of the topic-focused uh discussions work well, both in the in the chapter contexts and in the OMAC contexts, uh figuring out how to make those, I think, a little bit more um cross-cutting, chapter-led rather than necessarily staff-led or topics suggested by the staff is is a big next step that we need to uh continue to work on. Um, but we're very grateful for the work of the check in, uh as somebody put it earlier, providing the bridge between the uh the board and the delegates, it's very very much something that we value and uh thank you very much for your help and travel safe.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. I hope I can see many of you, uh if not uh tomorrow, but along the week, yeah? I thank you for the opportunity for for being here with you.
Thank you again.
Yeah, bye-bye. Now I have to rush to the airport.
Uh, the next uh report is from OMAC, Harold Suma. Um, I I want to call attention to the board. It appears Harold isn't with us, but he did provide a written report. And there are a couple of things that uh I think I want to call the attention of the board to, uh, one is uh the organizational members were particularly interested in focusing on some of the um work that ISOC is doing with uh the preparations for WTSA twenty-four and WISs. Uh, and it definitely appears that there's some good cooperation that's developing between the organizational members and uh the ISOC delegations in that um uh set of uh interactions, and there is some broader interactions with the um overall action plan. And I believe that the the uh the OMAC as a whole uh is committed to the the action plan and its cooperation and developing it was definitely an important step. But I think we are seeing there uh again, some issues of maintaining continuity. Uh, if you look at at the report, um Harold is now the sole OMAC chair. Uh, ideally, there would be three co-chairs um to in ensure continuity. Uh, and there is an election cycle uh next year, but at the moment, because of departures, um the, there is only one. And I think that's, that's an issue of potential concern there, because if for some reason Harold were not able to continue, uh we would have a a serious continuity problem, and it's not it's not that people are necessarily losing interest in ISO, but uh in this particular case, one of the previous co-chairs uh left his position with a company that does support ISO and moved to a new company that's not a member. Now, hopefully, they will become a member and resolve our problem that way. Um, but it is something that I think we need to consider structurally, uh if there is a a mechanism uh to potentially allow uh interim elections in situations like this, because waiting until, you know, the midpoint of twenty twenty-six to resolve this problem leaves a lot on Harold's shoulders. Uh, so I suggest that uh potentially, the next time we have a chance to to sit down with the OMAC leadership, uh that we focus on um potentially looking at that. Um, were there other comments on the written report? Okay, uh we'll just like that for future future discussion, then, um the the continuity issue. I I do also want to to take a moment to thank the OMAC, uh the Roundtable Series, I've been able to participate in quite a number of those, and they're very valuable, um uh deep dives into uh some of the issues of the day, mostly technical issues, but occasionally um other types of issues. And I believe that um that's a model that we may want to to broaden in in our approach. Uh Barry?
Yeah, it's, I I attend the um the OMAC roundtables as well and also like them. Uh, just having a little off with discussion with Kathleen, who has said she would like to be informed about OMAC stuff. And uh it occurs to me that we're subscribed to the chapter delegates list, but we're not all subscribed to the OMAC list. And can can we change that? I thought I would ask Harold that, but since he's not here, I'll just ask it to say Lauren or whatever, does that? I mean, does
Okay, so the the question
Does anybody not want to be subscribed to the OMAC list? It's really a very low-volume list, but uh notifications of things like the OMAC roundtables go to.
So I I thought all um all of us were eligible to be on the OMAC list as a result of being on the board. Uh, Lauren, can you confirm that that's the case and come back to us? Thank you very much. Brian?
Oh, I was just gonna say, I thought we were all on it already. But.
Okay, so maybe it's just that the new um
Oh, that could be.
The new board members have not
Okay.
I'm taking action. Okay, uh, the next item of business on the uh agenda is the San Francisco Bay Area Chapter Report. Are they with us at this point? Okay, then, uh, I had actually put in something after the approval of minutes, and why don't we do it now? Uh, because I think it actually ties in very strongly to what uh the discussion we just had with Flavio. And and this is just a note of encouragement to the chapters that are information. We understand that there may need to be um some additional consideration of how we support chapters that are information. And I think uh we'll continue to work with the check and the staff uh to make sure that appropriate guidelines and whatever other support that we can, we can give at that stage is provided there. But I want to convey to the chapters' information and into the whole community how important we see uh the growth of that community in that way. Um, the creation of new chapters is a real statement that the breadth of the internet society is growing. And I believe that the strength of the internet society really does grow from two things, one of which is our unity of purpose. The internet is for everyone. And the second of which is the incredible variety of experience uh that people bring to the organization. Uh, chapters uh have an extraordinary um set of uh experiences and capabilities that they bring. And uh the OMAC and the IETF bring very different but equally important experiences. And I believe that when we look at this, what we're seeing is that that breadth is really an extraordinary part of the strength of the society. And knitting together that breadth is an important part of our role as the Board of Trustees. And we want to provide a a strong statement to everybody who is building out that breadth uh that from our part, we will commit to making sure that from whatever part of the community you come, uh that you will always be treated fairly, that we will always make sure that we give everyone all of the opportunities across the board, whether they're coming from uh chapter, OMAC, IETF, staff, any part of the society. Because we feel that by doing that, we have the best opportunity of achieving our mission. We won't know how to make the internet for everyone if we don't include everyone as a potential part of the internet society. And it's our commitment as the board that we will do that uh as we go forward, as we have done. Um, Caleb?
As this question might necessarily not be so direct, but it's connected to what you said. Um, I've had people ask me questions.
I think you actually have to face the microphone, because otherwise you're not on.
Okay, I think I'll change it this way. So I can always face the microphone. So can you hear me now? Great, so um some things might, it might not be directly connected, but it's connected. Um, I've had some people ask me that. The population of a country um is not reflecting the formation of certain chapters, however, um, they've seen that, take for example, in the US, it has about two hundred and forty. Um, approximately over two hundred million anyway, um, but it has fifty states. And we see chapters springing up here and there. Um, and that same question also came to me while in Canada. Um, they asked the question that why is it that we can't have chapters in different provinces? Um, same question also came to me also in while leading in the Nigerian, the Nigerian as a former president, that why can't we have over two hundred million people in Nigeria? And why can't we just, and we have the six states, why can't we have local chapters? Because it's even difficult to coordinate at a central level. Um, I know it might not be directly affected, there might not be specific answers to this, but I'm just throwing it open, um if there are considerations for that, because we see that we are beginning to have more chapters. Um, at this other part of the world, but in other parts of the world where we have large population, that is not, I don't know if that will be considered as something for the growth of internet society and um more engagement and active participation at a local level.
Uh, thank you for raising this issue, and I I think that um we can always continue to examine the structures by which we support people's membership. And if uh we need to make those structures more granular to encourage them, that's definitely something we can consider. I think the encouragement we're trying to give today is to let people know that uh if they're interested in contributing in whatever role they 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 want to, that we want to work with them to find them a way to contribute. Because we believe that the the lived experience of people, whether they're um you know, in in North Macedonia, in Hawaii, or in any of other places that are currently considering uh building chapters, or if they're in organizations or the IETF, all of that contributes to who we are. And we can definitely find new ways uh to open uh those structures to them. On this particular issue, I think that's a a discussion we would probably want to open with the check, so let me suggest. Um, we were talking about having informal discussions with the check, that we start an informal discussion with them on how the the current mechanisms work and uh what they might like to see as the next step, but is that what? Thank you very much, because we're running a little bit ahead of, oh, Barry, sorry, go ahead. No, we're running ahead of time. We got Barry and Charles to
Okay, but you're gonna say running behind. Uh, yeah, just following up on what uh what Caleb just said, that it it's kind of odd to me um that in a country as big as the US, we have chapters in San Francisco and LA and Washington DC and New York, and that's it. And there's nothing in the middle. I know, of course, people from New York will say there is nothing in the middle, but um, that's a little stretching it. Um, now clearly, a lot of that is just the the impetus to start a chapter, but uh how do we, I guess the question is, apart from making it easier, sorry, apart from making it easier to start chapters, how do we reach out and get people interested in starting chapters? And maybe we should have that conversation.
Uh, before Charles uh goes on, I I will say that uh when I have seen it, it has mostly been because people because people see something that the internet society is doing and understand that this is the one of the ways that they can contribute. I had somebody reach out to me as part of the response to the Amicus program, to say, you know, how can we get involved in the internet society and support this work? And in that particular case, it, there was a chapter local, but it would be definitely the case that when we get that sort of response to any part of the work of the internet society, we can point them to all of the different ways they can become part of the effort, and that would include forming a chapter. The other thing I think we can do there is to allow the chapters to kind of serve as our ambassadors to related regions, et cetera. And I think that that's how it's worked in the Caribbean, for example. So I think there are a couple of possibilities there, but we can always work on that. Charles?
Yeah, I want to echo everything that Ted has been saying about chapters in rejuvenation and so on, but I think, first of all, I want to say that we need better information and communications, maybe from the staff about what's has been going on with these chapters, like I got these numbers that Flavio quoted in his slide about the number of chapters in rejuvenation and so on, but in fact, yeah, that's the only information that we have seen. It hasn't, I mean, certainly, I think staff would have that information, and I think that would be useful for us if we can, you know, have an idea about what's going on, or which are the chapters that are, you know, going through which part of the process and so on, that's number one. And the other thing is, I found chapters to be very different from one location to another, one chapter to another. And a lot of times, it is really about who are the people that happen to be involved, and what, whether their interest is more on policy or community work, or technical issue, standard issues and so on. So for better or worse, chapter takes on, different chapters take on different identity, and they sometimes follow one particular path rather than another. That's either a sign of strength or weakness, but that's the way it is. So I think we probably also need to have some research or comparison between how chapters are being, you know, what are the factors that make chapters sustainable compared to others that are not so sustainable? Whether it be some chapters are too dependent on certain individuals, and then when they got changed jobs or moved or didn't have enough time, and then chapters go away and so on. So I think we need a little bit of better understanding about what's been happening. And yeah, I agree that for some countries like especially the US, I think there are a lot of potential, but the difficulty is how to sustain them. If you start a chapter in different places, you know, how do you sustain them? That's the difficulty, because in most, in many cases, they are very dependent on certain the, how active certain individuals are, and then once that change, everything change. So how do we make chapters more, you know, less dependent on some of the individuals involved, but more in the kind of causes that they follow and being able to sustain itself? I think that is something that hopefully, you know, either by the chapters themselves sharing information so that they can advise or help each other, or or for ISOC to be able to provide some guidance in order for chapters to avoid certain pitfalls.
Thank you for this discussion. It's really, I think, a really, really useful conversation to figure out how we strengthen this important part of our community. Just to respond to a couple things that have been raised that we'll definitely take back, this notion of how do we support chapters in formation? I think that's a useful question, because we want chapters in formation to be successful. There is quite a bit of staff work that goes into supporting chapters that are in formation, but there may be other ways that we can provide support, so we'll look into that. In terms of sub-country chapters, there's, I think, Charles, your point is extremely well taken, that there's a lot of nuance around the world, and it's unique sometimes to the region or the country at hand. There are some national chapters that have expressed concerns about having sub-country chapters, and of course, chapters go through approval process among all the chapters themselves, and so there's a nuance there that we just have to be attuned to, but we aren't, we don't object certainly at the global level to sub-regional or some, you know, local chapters. On the data from staff about chapters, we have been, Chris and I are now getting periodic updates from CE about, with some of that chapter data. We can look at how we turn that into a report that we could share with the board periodically, if that would be useful. So I think we'll take that as a to-do item. In terms of the factors that make chapters successful, I think that would be a great conversation to have within the chat. Because you do have some very, very active chapters that are doing a lot of really great work and having some ideas generated from them would be really, I think, useful for them, you know, that kind of inter-chapter sharing that we've been talking about and wanting to achieve, I think that would be very productive. Of course, we have the chapter evaluation criteria in part to achieve that, right? We are looking for elections to happen, we are looking for, you know, periodic activities and other sorts of things that, and those criteria were developed with the chapters, because we think that that is an indicator of chapter health and the ability to carry out activities. So I do think that those criteria are actually a useful starting point for what makes a successful chapter. But then it's how do you go from that criteria into sort of the life of it, which I think only the chapters can tell us. So, you know, talking to Flavio in Brazil, and we know the Mali chapter is incredibly active. Nigeria is very active. We have a lot of very strong chapters that could probably provide that kind of insight to the others. So I think that may be another takeaway that we can propose to the chat.
Thank you very much. Sagarika, did you have an intervention? Charles? Marine, okay, sorry. I was making sure that those were cleared before I came to Marine. Yeah.
Yes, I'm just mentioning about chapters and the diversity amongst the, you know, amongst the group of chapters that we have. Going back to my own, Pekai SOC. One of the interesting things about Pekai SOC is, of course, that it actually is, includes 18 different countries. So the diversity even between the chapter, you know, within the chapter itself, sort of like makes it so that when there is a leadership team, they seem to concentrate on their own country issues, you know, so that there isn't, one of the things that I've actually noted of late is that there isn't a broader overall, you know, sort of like overall view of, of, you know, what's happening across the Pacific, and it becomes very centralized. So, you know, sometimes the issue, I mean, the issues may sort of like deal with, you know, so like on a minor scale for things overall, but really there isn't that much of a concern. So this is, so that I guess it's one of the things that I've sort of like attempted to sort of like get, but I think that, you know, with a greater sort of like input that, you know, ISOC is actually having in the region, it's going to make a difference and sort of like get them to focus more on sort of like getting some sort of like overall perspective of what's within the region. And it is really difficult, because I mean, you know, they range from islands that have about 5,000 people on them to some 5 million people. So you're, you know, the sort of, the range of issues is very, is very broad as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Marine. I think, I think that does highlight some of what we're trying to get at here, is that the variety of experience in chapter members, some of them might be coming from an island of 5,000, some of them of metropolitan area in a country of a billion is extraordinary, and it does present some challenges in providing them appropriate support. But it's also an extraordinary opportunity for the society to bring together people from all of those different contexts to help us understand what it means to them to be part of the internet and what it means for us to work on behalf of the internet to make the internet for everyone. And I think as we move forward, we have to ensure as a board, and I believe this board is committed to ensuring that whether somebody comes from an island of 5,000 or is in a metropolitan area in a country of a billion, or is a staff member, organizational member, or part of the IETF, that in all of those cases, we will strive to make sure that we behave fairly toward everybody and that we discriminate against no one. And I think that's the commitment from the board as we continue to work on this set of issues. Because we're running a little bit ahead, we're going to turn from that important discussion to a little bit of housekeeping. We have some minutes to approve. If I could turn your attention to the the next item business, we have three sets of minutes to approve today. The first of which is the approval of the board meeting 186 of February 12th. Are there any questions about the minutes as presented? Okay. I guess then I'm looking for a motion to approve. I saw Kathleen, sorry, I'm a bit jet-lagged, and Brian. I've only known you 20 years. Sorry, Kathleen and Brian, all those in favor of the approval of these minutes, please signify by raising your All those opposed? Any abstain? Marine, I didn't get a position from you, or are you not? Sorry? Okay, so that passes unanimously, and thank you very much. The next is the approval of the board meeting 185, which is January 8th. Are there any questions about the these minutes as presented? This is functionally the approval of the Internet Architecture Slate. In that case, may I ask somebody to move? I saw Laura, I saw Ramon. All those in favor, please raise your hand. I believe that's unanimous. Thank you, everyone. The final set of minutes to approve is the December 11th board meeting, which is 184. Any questions about those? The approval of these minutes? I see no questions. May I ask somebody to move? I saw Barry and, once again, Kathleen. Click off the mark. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Okay, thank you very much, everyone. That is also unanimously approved. The next item of business is the report from the San Francisco Bay Area Chapter. Oh, sorry, Caleb, did you have a question?
I just have a general comment on the minutes of meeting.
Once again, you're gonna have to really point it.
So I said I have a general comment on the minute of meeting. May I suggest that? I know documented meetings, minutes of meetings can be very caskin, but may I just suggest that it's always good if we have those minutes of meetings, perhaps a week or two after those meetings. And if there is a way we can approve it at the following ISOC monthly meetings that we have, not piling them up like we have them now. The reason why I'm saying that is that reviewing some of those meetings, some of the things we say, the ideas are fresh, one can remember, and if there is need for correction, that can also be part of the conversation during such minutes approval and stuffs like that. So it's just a suggestion that we try as much as possible, if we can just, you know, do everything much, not compressing everything at a later date.
Okay, that's certainly something we can get on board, that if we're going to have a formal meeting, we can always take up the minutes of the previous formal meeting, and there were a couple of these here. I will point out, in this case, there were a couple of these that were embargoed, because like for the IAB slate that's announced at at the IETF in concert with a bunch of other slates, because they're all announced at the same time. So in this particular case, there were a couple of issues here with making them public in advance, and that's that's sometimes part of what's happening, but we can definitely take it on board, that in general, we'll try and do the minutes, either by unanimous consent and an e-vote, or at the next available formal meeting. Thanks for raising the point. Barry?
Yeah, along that line, is it, can we release minutes with a generic statement that say we approved the slate or whatever without saying what's on it, and then update that later when the embargo is lifted, so that we can get the bulk of the minutes out earlier?
Let me chat with Alona and get back to you on that, because I believe that there would be some questions about what was considered the actual formal record there. When we approve the minutes, I think we're approving the formal record, and if we update the formal record post facto, we might need another resolution to do that.
Yeah, we certainly wouldn't need another resolution, but
So it might turn into an extra level of complication, so.
Okay.
Obviously, in this particular case, people saw the IAB slate announced, so they knew we must have approved it. So there's a little bit a chicken and egg problem that there, we withheld the minutes in order not to step on them, and then they announced them, and at that point, we could have we can get to that. In the meantime, we have somebody waiting to give us the report, so let us turn now to the San Francisco Bay Area Chapter. Welcome.
Hello, everyone. Thanks for having us. Just to make sure I'm on the right page here, have David, who is on the board with me, of our local chapter.
Hi, everyone.
Yep, if you can see, David is traveling, proving the internet is useful. So the agenda for us, far as I am been told, is to kind of give a brief introduction of the chapter and what our kind of recent activities have been, and maybe mention some of our challenges and what our plan is to deal with them. Okay, I have a short Yeah, all right, awesome, thank you. Have a short presentation to show you, just to, I'm happy to, actually, can I actually chat this? Let me put it there in the chat, may have to make it, let me change permissions real quick here. Okay, everybody should be able to open, read it if you choose to.
Okay, Lauren, can you bring it up? Because we actually aren't seeing the chat. Locally here in the room, the chat isn't visible to us, but Lauren will bring it up.
Okay, well, I'm sharing my screen if you can see this in one moment. Are you able to see the presentation?
They're just bringing it up now, give us a moment to, okay, it's ready now.
Great. Hello, everyone. My name is Ron Petty. I'm the current Chair of the San Francisco Bay Area Chapter of the Internet Society. Along with me is David Isa, who is our Vice Chair this year. And we are going to provide a little overview of what we've been up to. And we are going to provide a little overview of what we've been up to. First and foremost, we are proud to be a gigabit chapter once again. I believe this is our fifth year in a row. That really can't take credit for that. We've had very active and hardworking board members in the years past that led to this. And, you know, in most recent terms, Jessica, who was our prior Chair, did a wonderful job running the organization, especially coming out of the COVID era. So just want to say that I'm very happy for the ongoing board members and the support of the national group as well. So thanks to everybody who makes this kind of thing possible. So the agenda for the slides, again, just a few slides. One is just kind of what is the status of our chapter? Financially, a little bit about the board composition. And then go through the events that we have been putting on for the last year and what we are doing in the near term. And finalizing with a bit of kind of what are our local challenges? So maybe you can compare and contrast that to maybe challenges that are going around with other chapters and in the internet in general. Okay, a little bit about our group. We've been around since 2010. Some of the members have been around almost as long, which is quite nice and reassuring that people remain interested in these kinds of activities. There's our contact information, our website. We try to keep up to date on activities there so you can follow along there as well. We have, as it mentions here, 1,000 registered members. Of course, that's over a long period of time, including prior again to the COVID era. We'll get to that when we get into challenges. How do we activate these members? So the current board composition, we have eight members. We've had to let some, well, we had some board members recently roll off due to our structure of term durations, but remain as members. Jesus and Hoel, who are very part and parcel to a lot of the grant work that had been done in the last couple of years. So appreciate what they have done for us. Financially, given the level of our activities, I think we are quite well prepared. Of course, you never say more to note more money, but I think positionally, I think we're doing doing very well. We do have one large grant payout still. But nonetheless, you know, a lot of this comes from the grants we receive and we thank you very much. We also are trying to up our fundraising efforts through local activities, sponsorship, and we'll talk about that when we get to the events. All right, our current board has a mix of backgrounds. What's not captured on here is the recent changes since our January election cycle. Just to mention the ones you do not see here, Tom Thorley was on our board last year. Part of our efforts to expand the chapter's footprints around the world includes here out on the west coast of the US, we've been the only chapter for a long time. We've managed to help the Los Angeles SoCal chapter get on its feet. And Tom, who was on our board, is now the head of that chapter down in Los Angeles. California is large enough and enough concerns to have two chapters. But there's also more to the west coast than than that. So we've also been working in Nevada and the Pacific Northwest to also expand in those regions. We've hit some headwinds around things such as the bylaws and in efforts around to maybe localize them and also just some other, just to be open, challenges around financing. But we're working on it and so we'll continue to work on on those efforts as well. Additionally, there's the recent activity to create a Hawaiian chapter. So we've been asked if we could assist with that just because of our recent activities, trying to spawn these other chapters. And so that's that's kind of the work that had been going on and continues to go on. Our board now, we've produced or participated in the creation of a couple of different white papers. Again, Tom and myself worked on one called the Cloud Native Artificial Intelligence White Paper with the Linux Foundation. And that's that paper is meant to talk about all kind of concepts around AI and its impact in the cloud native ecosystem. More recently, April, with other members of the Internet Society produced a white paper around safety for teenagers online. Some of our members live outside of the Bay Area. So Fatima lives in Seattle. And so, you know, just showing we have some reach into other, you know, metropolitan areas, other communities that we can interact with and again, leading to things up, you know, sponsorship opportunities, things like this. Other members such as Gustavo is well healed. He is probably sitting in the room with you right now or is very, very close to you at the event. So Gustavo is our treasurer and very well versed in kind of the different groups I can mention here, InfraGuard, great, great asset. So again, don't want to take too much time, but our board is very much involved with various aspects of internet and consumption of things around the internet. And we thank them for that. So event wise, when I'm glad David is here. David is critical to putting on events and getting interest and expertise together. So thank you to David for being here. So what have we? Yeah. So what have we done? So in in recent times, 2024, we put out a couple of white papers. Of course, we had our elections. There's typical things we do, like all chapters do, you know, apply for admin grants. Make sure the bylaws are up to date, all these kind of typical activities. Again, chapter formation is another area that we've been trying to work on as well with different degrees of success, but hopefully we're getting better at it. Globally, what's happened when the, I probably mislabeled it here, the creation of the foundation, the foundation was already here, but the new AMS systems that we were using, that, you know, caused us to kind of revisit how we do member management, which is actually a good thing. Having new tools available is good. But additionally, just making a stop for a moment to think about what we're actually doing when it comes to contacting and management was a kind of a extra benefit there. The grant work we've done, we've leveraged beyond the net, large and small. Thank you very much for those. A lot of that work was done even before I became the Chair, but we've wrapped it up this year. So some of the projects include, for example, we partnered with groups down in Half Moon Bay, which is a town south of San Francisco. There's a lot of migrant workers in that area who have very little technical skills. So we partner with local organization to provide that training, provide those resources and that largely was because of these grants. So thanks for that. Additionally, we've partnered with what came from the Internet at 50 event. So Global Encryption Day is actually a knock on because of this. So the IEEE, the Internet Society, the ACM, People Centered Internet, we're all involved with the I50, which is the 50th anniversary celebration of TCP IP. And David, myself, some other members, along with other local professional societies such as the ACM, got together to help volunteer. We were, for our part, we were the handlers of the speakers and the AV team, which we, which we learned, we might have to do a little remedial training on how to do AV, but we tried our best. But it was a very fun, fun opportunity and the more interesting part is we got to work with other groups. And so through the People Centered Internet, we've met the Global Encryption Coalition. And so they put on an annual event, Global Encryption Day. We decided to work with them to do a local edition of this event. So you can see there, that's a clickable link to GEDSF.org and on there you can find the presentations and the recordings from those events. Additionally, since COVID, our in-person meetings had lessened. What this gave us an opportunity was is to go back out in the community, work with sponsors. Unfortunately, we had two great ones for Global Encryption Day SF. We had Google. They let us use the Google Community Space, which is in downtown San Francisco. We did that for the training due to its big, large, you know, tables and it was very nice. They sponsored food. We had additional sponsors for food and other aspects of it. So Front Egg was another corporate sponsor of that event. That we'll see leads to more sponsorship later for future events we're doing. Additionally, that for that same event, Global Encryption Day, the training was at Google, but the afternoon for the Thought Leadership Track was at CloudFlare. We thought it would be very prudent to be at one of the internet focused companies, as it were, and they were very gracious to host us in their very neat facility. So again, you can check out some videos, pictures from those events. Speaker wise, we had the benefit of Charles Mock. We've also had the team from Giga present as well. We had a training from, you know, companies around encryption technologies. And then at the end, most exciting to me, being a nerd, was the the post quantum encryption talk by the CTO of the Post Quantum Encryption Group at the Linux Foundation, Hart Montgomery. So again, all of this comes together because of our notoriety being with the Internet Society. So that makes people excited to join us and it actually went very well. So that's kind of what happened this past year. What's happened this year is we've transitioned some termed out members of the board, brought on new members, including David and David, who is not here, which have been a great addition as well. And so what's happening this year is we're continuing to look at, you know, grant opportunities. It's been a little slow at the beginning couple of months because we've been actually working on other activities. So maybe the most important one is the first event here, Internet Day SF, that actually just completed on February 6. So we, based on our experience with Global Encryption Day, we went for a round two. This time the focus around AI and its kind of general impact. So I failed to mention on Global Encryption Day, we partnered with the local ACM, so the what they call the SF Bay ACM Chapter. Much larger organization here, you know, they helped manage the crowd, work on the talks, right? All these things as well. So same thing for AI Day, we had a great working relationship with them. Turns out David and I are also members of the SF Bay ACM, so it makes it easy to work with yourself. And so we took advantage of that. They also have a great network of technicians. And so for us, we were able to get speakers for AI Day. Again, we had a training session during the day and then the evening we had Thought Leadership. Like this again was hosted at Google, so thank you, Google, very much for that opportunity. So this is leading us to kind of come up with this quarterly theme. Our next target is in May for Internet Day. So we are starting to put together an agenda for that program. And because of the success of the last couple of events, we're starting to get more, more sponsorship opportunities and interest in these events. And so again, we want to take these and share with others. Okay, our current challenges, largely the challenges that affect us here on the ground in San Francisco are the same ones that affect all the groups here on the ground in San Francisco. You know, ACM, IEEE and the like. COVID really stopped a lot, even even though now it's been, you know, a couple of years. If you look back, even before COVID, we'll just say corporate America was tightening their purse strings. And so sponsorship, even in the Bay, for all the tech that it is out here, started to be less generous. And that's not just for the Internet Society, that's for basically all these kinds of groups. COVID didn't know one any favors in San Francisco. And even today, it's still a bit of a challenge because those who did stay are largely still working from home. So those are things we have to deal with and not just here, but everywhere. Another concern that I've noticed is around the mid-career and younger professionals. So people coming out of school. So at least in from my memory back in the 90s, you didn't get out of computer science program without being in the ACM. You didn't get, you know, out of some professional, you know, engineering program without joining the professional societies, right? Or civil society groups. And so same kind of thing here, I feel from what I can tell by talking to undergrads and grad students that we don't show up on radars as much as I would say in decades past. And that's something we're trying to change. Additionally, of course, AI is here. That's causing a little bit of disruption, mainly in the in people's focus. So what is happening around here is there's so many AI meetups. It's kind of flooded the market. So there was always competition, but now there's even more competition. So it's kind of funny. I said there's less people, but there's more meetups and that's because of largely because of AI and all, you know, rightfully so. And so it has an impact on the internet and what people use the internet for. So we want to stay on top of it. And that's actually why we came up with AI Day as well. Another challenge is just the perennial challenge to volunteers. How do you get people involved quickly and get a win quickly? So, you know, even things that we take for granted as simple things like update a website aren't so simple. Someone has to get the login. Someone has to, you know, make sure they know the technology that we're even using, right? So standard kind of problems with any new job, right? So how do we get people on board to not just work on the website, but also, you know, take marketing materials, go out and talk to others, train others, which to me is a big thing. You can talk all you want. But if you can't actually train someone to do something, I think you've only done half, half of it. So, you know, for my part, I'm trying to, you know, have these training events and get the assets to people where they can actually spread the word and actually look for trouble and actually fix that trouble. Maybe part of this is just marketing. Again, undergrads don't seem to know who we are, which is a problem. So why would they join us 10 years later if they've never heard of us, right? That, you know, I'm not trying to make it too black and white, but that's, that's the problem there. So to kind of maybe deal with this, we want to get out of just being at Google, right? It's, we love Google for hosting us, but we want to, you know, get back down to like smaller groups, settings to get people knowing who we are, what we do and what we can offer. So kind of already talking about this, that's the response, right? So have more in-person events, you know, COVID stopped all that. That's no longer really an excuse now. So we want to keep, keep doing this. The sponsorship here, people are starting to become a little friendlier, especially now that they see we're succeeding with in-person events. It's not the old days where Google would just drop 20 grand on you and say, good job. Now it's, you know, smaller companies, they want to be very focused on how they sponsor, which is fine. They have their marketing concerns. So the good news is we're starting to get that reach again. I think we're up to our fourth sponsorship now. So that's, that's great. No joke on marketing. If people walk down the street, I mentioned a billboard here. You know, sometimes being in the physical world is also important. And so some kind of physical presence, again, in-person events, things that people can see. I have my own office, probably can't see it, but I have posters for our events. I'll put them on the window when people walk by, they see it and that that actually helps generate a little bit, a little bit of buzz. Additionally, we want to get more grant action going. We've, we've closed off our large beyond, beyond the net grant work and now we're looking to our next activities, which can include renewal of working with the existing groups or something new. So again, this is something we are currently working on. And finally, one odd challenge we had, actually getting sponsors and facilities for these events was we didn't actually use SF Bay isoq.org email addresses. So to save money, we've been doing a shared Gmail account, which is all fine until someone says Gmail, that doesn't look like you belong to the Internet Society. So we're going to kind of refocus on where we spend our money on our tooling to get kind of just those basic elements. But again, we've literally been told no because our emails are not our group's domain. So not a big thing, but it is those little things that get you. So we're trying to make sure we clean up, look a little more professional in those regards. And of course, what is this all for? It is to defend the internet, which obviously I'm preaching to the choir here on that. And if you are not a member of the San Francisco Bay Area Chapter, I would love to encourage you to join us, the Internet I would love to encourage you to join us, the Internet works everywhere mostly. And if you can get on it, you can join us, and we'd love to have you. And that is our presentation.
Charles.
Yes, I am a I'm a member, Ron, I'm Charles.
Charles, yes.
So I'm happy to be, you know, participating in some of your local events in San Francisco Bay Area. And just want to also tell you, David and and Ron, that I met Tom when I was in Taipei. I couldn't get a chance to see him in California, we have to all go all the way to Taiwan to meet. So that was good. I just want to congratulate on the good work that the chapter has been doing. I think it's a good example of, you know, how to make good of a an active chapter. And I think some of the ways that you have been able to do it with, for example, working with some of the professional groups in the area, cooperating with them on activities and so on, and how you are going, how you've been going about to spawn off other chapters. That's also something that's, I think, many other chapters hopefully can also reference. And yeah, it was great to see some of the face-to-face activities that you have been able to organize. And I think you work out a good sort of a way to replicate the kind of like AI Day, Internet Day, Encryption Day, and so on. So so I think that's the kind of thing that maybe you should develop this presentation into sort of like a menu or something like that and be able to hopefully with the with ISOC support to put it into a sort of a knowledge management database so that, you know, other chapters can reference. If they are in the same sort of position or or profile or whatever, and they could reference the way that you have been able to do what you can and make it a success. So yeah, just that's all I want to say. And yeah, good, once again, good work and hope that David, you will continue to work on, you know, with the chapter and, oh, I see that you 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 finally settled down. Not traveling anymore, so but anyway, yeah, good work. And I hope to continue to participate in your local events. Thank you. Thank you, Charles.
Just going to echo Charles's comments, that was extremely helpful to understand the challenges. And then over a span of time, right, that you think back to impacts from the pandemic and then going forward and your engagement with industry. I guess my one question, and maybe Charles is your link here or one of them. Oh, I'm sorry, maybe Charles is your link in to universities for your area. I'm also an adjunct at Georgetown, so I try to integrate protocol awareness. And, you know, I don't think I mentioned the Internet Society, but I do make students aware of protocols, which I know is lacking in most programs. So maybe there's more, and maybe that's something Charles and I can help with offline. And I don't know if anyone else is professor or adjunct. Maybe we can brainstorm a bit, but that sounded like something we might be able to think about more. Thank you.
Yeah, on that point, actually, and Ron, David, you can elaborate. I do know that they actually are beginning to work with some universities and students and some of, you know, some of the professors are bringing, you know, groups of students to join some of your activities and so on. And I think overall, yeah, I echo what Kathy has been saying. I mean, I mean, on from time to time when I talk to students, and I even talk to them about some of this little, you know, commonly known in this room about the history of the Internet and so on, and what's been happening. You know, how this one thing or another came about, they had no idea. And they all say that this is something that they hope they wish they had known and will be tremendously useful to what they're working on today about AI or whatever. But they had no idea how, you know, the Internet came about to to start with. And and I thought this is the kind of thing that maybe, you know, through the chapters or maybe even ISOC, you know. And and again, working with some of the students, youngest university university or younger student or younger professionals to to fill in the gap because I think it's going to be useful for them and for technology development going forwards because you have to know what what happened before, and it's going to be useful. It should be very useful to them.
Just a quick comment on on this topic because I I think what has helped the events be successful and that Ron and I have been a little bit opinionated about in the format is the combination of a training session and and part of of the event followed up with afterwards. That combination is what has, I think, allowed our outreach to students specifically or working professionals who are seeking growth in their careers to really elevate the awareness that we have. And then it's accelerated the partnership that we've had with some of the professors, encouraging them to bring the students or sharing, you know, that information with the students there so they feel both learn as it's industries.
So you broke up for us a little bit at the very end there, but possibly you could repeat the last 20 seconds?
I apologize. I am at the airport. Yeah, I'm not sure, I lost you, but the importance being the combination between the training as well, the thought of tracks in the events has encouraged professors and students to join our events.
Okay. Maybe I could repeat it just real quick. Yeah, so the the format is working with students, it seems. And so Charles, point, we've had a group of CMU students come with their instructor to en masse to to these these meetings. And again, it's one for training, you see what these tools and technologies are about. And then the thought leadership part, not only do you see what the real problems are today in a particular sector of society, you get to meet the people dealing with it. And so they can, you know, network with them and take advantage of that as well.
So I see Caleb, Caleb, may I just make one quick intervention?
Yeah.
I I think it's great that you're working with professors who were interested in some of the technical aspects of the of the work of the Internet. But I just want to point out that there's a whole bunch of civil society folks who might be also interested, given some of the challenges the Internet is facing right now. So you may want to consider branching in into that. Obviously, the people pouring the ice believe in, he does a little soundtrack to it. Caleb.
Yes, so I I think there are lessons learned from some of the things that is mentioned. And one of the things that is very instructive for me is looking at the future of the Internet Society. And why did I say that? But I do hope that in the next possible few years from now, that those who will be members of the Internet Society will not be folks with lots of gray air, like myself, who is pretending that I don't have gray air and I had to dye it out. The reason why I'm saying this is that we need to start making conscious effort, not just for the San Francisco Bay Chapter, but other chapters specifically, to see how we can consciously start encouraging chapters to recruit younger members. This, this is some a very good lesson we are learning from San Francisco Bay and chapter, and I think that we should include this as part of some other additional incentives that we have for younger folks. Take, for example, fellowships to the, like the recent one that was announced. I'd like to see a a an interplay or maybe interconnection between if you are not a member of Internet Society in your local chapter, playing actively also encouraging them, right? Or even if you're applying for this, part of the criteria is that you must be a member of a local Internet Society chapter. I feel that it's also part of an incentive to play around how you get people to participate at the local chapter when they are young. Take, for example, I looked at the diversity of folks who applied for the NDSS Fellowship, and I realized that they are all young folks, right? And so they have the energy and they can participate. I'm just trying to connect, you know, all those interplays of where we give out opportunities to younger folks and how we can continue to get them engaged because they are members of a local chapter and increase that diversity at at that level.
Thank you, Maureen.
Just following on from what Caleb said, I think one of the things that a real opportunity for for ISOC is the ICAN meeting and the fellowship group. Fellowship, there's a different fellowship group every every ICAN meeting. And the and also there's a next gen, you know, the the academic group. I mean, they're an ideal, you know, they're an ideal opportunity to get to some, a lot of the young, younger people, especially as they sort of like spread across the across the regions and across the, you know, many of them are sort of like ISOC-related or, you know, within the ISOC chapter areas. And I think that that is an opportunity to, if you can get in to speak to the to the fellowship team, you know, early in the in their week or something. Thanks.
Thanks, Maureen. Seeing, you know, their interventions, let me just say, as one of the founding members of the Internet Society San Francisco Bay Area Chapter, it's very, very gratifying to me personally to have you as guest today and to hear such wonderful things about the ongoing activities. Since I currently live outside of Lisbon, I don't think I've been to a local event in a very long time. But it's always great to hear about the work you're doing. And thank you very much for being with us here today and for continuing the outreach in the local area. Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity. Thank you, everyone.
And with that, we'll take a short break, returning at the top of the hour. Okay, thanks, everybody, and welcome back from the break. Next up in our agenda today is to hear from Sally, so Sally's CEO's report.
Thank you, Ted. I submitted a report to the board that I will take as read, and I will go through just a few items and then happy to have any questions or conversation that you'd like to have. So this is perhaps my first formal CEO report to the board. So if you have any feedback on the content or the approach, please let me know. The report is structured around the CEO goals that were approved earlier this year. So further into the meeting, you'll have presentations by Katie Ben-Gard and Chris Locke about the specific progress of both the Internet Society and the Internet Society Foundation from 2024 and also looking ahead a bit into 2025. So I won't cover that here, but we should be able to have a more robust discussion during their reports. Clearly, but what I do want to say is that I'm incredibly proud of the staff and the team in the Internet Society and the Internet Society Foundation for the results of 2024. The teams remain focused in the midst of the leadership transitions that were taking place in the organization and really performed extremely well against our goals and our targets for the year. And in the case of both organizations and completing the five-year strategies that we were currently in. We also spent quite a bit of time in 2024 translating the strategic goals that had been adopted by the Board of Trustees into programs that both the Internet Society and the Internet Society Foundation could organize around. And those form the basis of the action plans that you approved in November and that we are currently working towards. As I, as I say in the report, strengthening community partnerships is a key area of focus for me and for the leadership team this year, ensuring that we have strong, ongoing dialogue with key parts of our community. As Flavio mentioned, Chris and I are having quarterly conversations with the CHAC leadership, the OMAC leadership. I also meet monthly with Jay Daly from the IETF LLC and and continuing a dialogue with the Internet Architecture Board, and I'll join them at their retreat in June. And we also, I'm working quite hard with John Nevett to ensure that the relationships are strong between the Internet Society and PIR. We, John came and spoke at our all-staff meeting in November. I spoke at his all-staff meeting. Chris, I think, has spoken at the PIR all-staff meeting. Our leadership teams have met periodically, and I meet monthly with John as well. And there's a lot of opportunity there for collaboration and just ensuring that that the staff on both organizations understand what we're doing and the impact of of all of our work in in the public interest. The board has also been quite clear that a key responsibility of mine is engagement outside with the community and being the public face for the Internet Society. Last quarter, Q4 of last year was incredibly busy for me in that regard, doing a lot of outreach to reintroduce myself, in some cases, to the community, to the chapters, the regional chapter calls, the OMAC, and other partners that are that are critical to the Internet Society. And the feedback on that has been very positive. Late last year, after the board met in November, I led a strong team of Internet Society and Internet Society Foundation staff to the IGF in Riyadh, Saudi Arabia. And that was a very busy time at Riyadh, in Riyadh. A lot of bilaterals with both governments and partners and an incredible amount of conversation about the upcoming WISsis Plus 20 and ways in which the Internet Society should position itself at WISsis Plus 20. Happy to talk about that if that's of interest. As you know, I think I mentioned to the board, I attended the Pacific Telecommunications Council, PTC, in Honolulu in January. This is part of our effort to do more work in the Pacific Islands and as part of an overall strategy to engage more in small island developing states as part of our 2030 strategy. And I want to thank Maureen for giving me some suggestions of of different people to meet, which we did in in Honolulu. And it gave us a little bit of insight as to the best ways to engage with that community. PTC is is interesting to us, there's a lot of government and industry players there that are useful. But also, I think, a reflection for us was that PETA, which is really where the Pacific Island Telecommunication Agencies, the governments come together, is a very useful forum for the Internet Society going forward, and I think we'll we'll seek to engage there more. It was also really, really nice to take that chance of being in Hawaii to meet with the Wamanalo Community Network, which is through the Nation of Hawaii. That is a community network that we funded five years ago. And to be able to go see the ways in which that community network is growing, the challenges that they're facing, it's quite real. It's only 25 minutes from Honolulu, which is a highly connected city. And yet you see here a community that is still in need of significant levels of support to maintain connectivity in that community. They were very gracious with their time and showing us both the network, but the ways in which they're using that network to expand their reach with their community, which is in fact global, and to to strengthen their ability to leverage the land that they live on. They are now applying for a community network grant as part of this window in order to try to expand their community network and the kind of services they can offer. We're very happy in terms of the community engagement plan for this year. We have over 15 at ISOC events planned in 2025. I'm happy to let you know that I think we even have the dates for many of them. I'm happy to let you know that I think we even have the dates for many of them already, which we will be sharing with trustees so that you know where those will be. And I'm really, really proud of the team for being able and willing to plan that far in advance and to know so that we can all plan our engagement with the community. We also sent delegations. We're not even, well, we're only in the third month of the year, but we've already sent strong delegations to NDSS, the Internet Development Conference in Ethiopia, Apricot and RightsCon. And I'm probably missing a couple, but those are the ones that we want to highlight here. Advocacy remains a very strong focus. The challenges to the internet are not slowing down. I'm incredibly proud of the team working on the Global Encryption Coalition. We've had a number of, I think, important wins early in the year. I think I mentioned to the board, there was a real challenge coming out of the UK to attack end-to-end encryption. The team came together very quickly with a letter that they wrote and got over 150 signatures, including the IAB and leading cryptographers from around the world to really challenge the UK to think differently about that approach. Obviously, there's still a lot of work to be done. And as of today, Apple has still withdrawn their encrypted storage feature for UK users. So in some ways, the internet is less secure in the UK for Apple users right now. I'm also really happy to report, just as of this morning, we had a pretty big win in France. There was a piece of legislation that had been approved in the Senate in France. It was related to drug enforcement, but they tacked on an anti-encryption amendment to that piece of legislation. The team came together very quickly with another letter demanding that that be withdrawn. It's very hard to get things withdrawn once they've been passed through the Senate, and we learned this morning that it had been withdrawn. So that Global Encryption Coalition is really impactful. They're working fast and just really incredibly proud of their advocacy power around the world. Because the challenges are coming fast and furious and show no signs of slowing down. With respect to organizational stability and adaptability, Chris will speak more about our revenue generation strategy. But Chris and I were in Boston and Washington DC in February, meeting with potential partners and donors. And we're really quite confident in our strategy, early confidence. We don't want to count our chickens before they hatch, but I think we've got a very strong approach. I feel really good about the revenue strategy that we've adopted and the team that's making that possible. We also updated our website to include a transparency page early this year on the basis of feedback from the community that they would like to understand how the different parts of the Internet Society work together. What are the legal relationships and how does all of that flow? And so we tried to improve the transparency around those items. And the feedback on that has been very positive so far. And then finally, well, maybe not finally, but on organizational resilience, one of the key areas of focus this year for me is on leadership continuity, business continuity. We're working with the Leadership Continuity Committee to ensure that we have CEO continuity plans in place as well as continuity plans for the executive leadership team. And so we hope to have some good progress to show you by the end of this year, that we have all of those together. We also have an internal risk management group that is working to look at enterprise risk across the organization and ensure that we are prepared to address risks as they arise. And this is a very normal thing that organizations do and an important thing for the Internet Society to have in place. And I want to really call out both Alona and Say for driving that work for us and ensuring that we have a strong framework that we can work towards and be prepared to manage risks. And then finally, I am responsible to report to the board quarterly on our progress with respect to the accessibility resolution and plan that we presented last year. And that report is included in your documents for this meeting. A real shout out to Dan York, who has been driving this work for us, working very closely with the Accessibility Standing Group. And we have made some early progress this year towards the plan that we committed to in November. If you have questions about that, again, I'm happy to speak to that.
Actually, I did have many comments on all the wonderful work you're doing.
We got some in the queue too.
One quick question on that before I start to drain the queue. In the course of the report that was attached, it's mentioned that Pulse is being redone. Obviously, Pulse is hugely important at this point, is it kind of place people go for information on both what the Internet Society is doing and what's happening in the places that we're monitoring. What drove the decision to replatform them?
This is actually work that we've been doing for the last couple of years. We wanted to improve the user interface for Pulse based on feedback from a lot of people. So Ryan and Polk and Amresh in particular did a lot of listening sessions with different parts of the community and the audience for Pulse. And over time, they have been updating different features within Pulse. So the country reports, which we just released, that we briefed you on in February, they're now looking at the presentation of shutdowns to make that a more user-friendly interface for everyone. And in doing that, ensuring that accessibility is built into that redesign. And we've been able to do that in part thanks to some of the funding through the Meda Grant.
Thank you. So I see Victor and Kathleen. I'm sorry, I didn't notice who was first. Kathleen.
So thank you. In looking through the report, it was nice to see the progress towards a risk register. What I'm wondering is, will there be a board-level interaction on the risk register? And I'm asking because from my experience at CIS, I was part of the internal team managing, not the direct oversight, but one of the managing people on our risk register. And we did have board interactions on it with regular meetings. I don't remember if they were quarterly or every six months, but if so, that's something I would be more than happy to engage with. It's an area of expertise for me.
Yes, so we are building this now. So this is new to us. And I think I'm looking at Alona and Say, but I think that by the board retreat, we should have something that is solid enough that we could share with you and get some feedback and then make it part of a more regular update to the board. Does that sound good?
Very good. Thank you. And I applaud the effort.
Victor?
So it's a very similar comment, so I just wanted to share that. So thank you for bringing it up. And then the other thing too, I guess, as you come through that, and I'm not sure how you feel about this, is like, it could either be reviewing the risk register, maybe it's metrics you're collecting on that that you share. Like, I mean, I guess there'll be proposals, what level, what that looks like, I'm assuming, right? But I think overall that makes sense because I think there's been, it's probably one of the things that does make sense to kind of have the board review is, you know, around that risk posture.
Yes, so we would want to look at the risk register with you, I think, and ensure that you understand the areas that we're focused on and the priorities. We also have organizational health metrics that we shared with you, I think it was in September, that we'll be reporting out to the board annually so that you'll see what we're paying attention to from a health perspective. So I think those two things combined will give us a really good overview of the health and sustainability of the Internet Society. Okay.
Thank you. Thanks, Sally. I really enjoyed reading it. And I'm sure you can guess what I'm going to talk about, but it's the ISOC's engagement outside our community that I want to talk about. And I appreciate all the effort that has gone into it. And I think I spoke to Maureen or Sagarika earlier and asking, you know, what exactly is stopping ISOC from being a household name? People knowing about ISOC. And I use myself as an example, until 2023, when the board recruited me, like I used to say, I didn't know anything about ISOC. And I had worked in the Ministry of Communications and Digital Economy in Nigeria, which was a shame that I didn't even know, as a special assistant to the minister, I didn't even know there was an ISOC. So I'm curious to know, I'm certain there will probably be a communication strategy, but it'd be good to know these engagements outside of our community, outside this closed space, sort of like an island that ISOC seems to be in. What's the communication strategy? How can we help as a board to sort of popularize ISOC beyond the spaces? As we know, the civic space is closing, the funding philanthropy space is closing even more. The world as we know it is almost over. We need more allies outside our circles of influence. Thank you.
Couldn't agree with you more, Funky. And certainly, things that the board can do is to point out places or spaces or communities that you think we need to be in that we aren't in. Always happy to hear that and make new connections with different kinds of partners. You're exactly right. There is a need to ensure that our closed community remains engaged with the Internet Society. But if we want to fulfill the mission of the organization, we have to go beyond that community as well. I am willing to, and I think it's one of my goals, is to ensure that I am a voice that is outside of the traditional community. But we want to do that with the staff as well and to start creating that mindset and that approach. So if you have suggestions, absolutely yes, please share them with us. And I think you'll also hear a bit about the communication strategy when Chris does his update tomorrow with the foundation. But thank you for that.
So myself in queue and then Sagarika. So one of the things I wanted to come back to was the Global Encryption Coalition. And I think this is both an example of the need to build alliances when we have folks who share our values on a particular topic and at times the need to let those alliances speak instead of ISOC. To some degree, I think the Global Encryption Coalition is a more effective voice on the topics where we're speaking than having ISOC hold exactly the same positions because it does bring together subject matter experts and folks with a great deal of throw weight, to use the informal term, in the respective communities. So I think we have seen that as a success in the past, that being the convener and driving force behind a coalition may make us a multiplier of forces where the coalition is the more effective front speaker for this than the Internet Society itself. That doesn't mean we're stepping back from our mission. It's, we're building the alliance to take it forward on our behalf. And I think as I look forward in the next two years, that sort of alliance building is going to be incredibly important and we'll have a number of these decisions to make, or Sally and her team will have a number of these decisions to make about when it's the Internet Society speaking, when it's a coalition speaking, and when it's an individual who might have, you know, the gravitas to speak on a specific topic, who takes the lead and then we support. So I think there's a bunch of different strategies and we want to make sure that we're using them all. Sagarika?
So it's just a comment adding what Funky was saying. So like she said, like most of the chapters, ISOC chapters was initiated by the technical community. So most of the time, it's a closed community, nothing much interaction with the other part of the world or the civil society. So I was suggesting in Sri Lanka, the ISOC Sri Lanka chapter, so we need to outreach to the community. So part of this, I was suggesting to have the school chapters. So where we can reach out to the wider community, like including students, teachers and the parents. And that would help us to reach to the donors as well because once the word spread out, they will reach out to us. So like same strategy would be useful for us to reach out to the donors if we are expanding that.
And I think I've mostly come to the end. Looking ahead, it's going to be a busy end of Q1 into Q2. I will, following this meeting, we have, of course, the PIR board meeting this weekend, some engagement at the ICAN meeting and some meeting with other partners that Chris and I and Say and others, Sarah, will be having. We'll then go on to Bangkok for the IETF meeting. I will be there. We have a very strong policymaker program this time in Bangkok. Part of that is because the visa situation in Bangkok is much more favorable to the program than what we saw in Dublin in November, where we lost a number of participants. So we have almost an oversubscribed policymaker program in Bangkok as a result of that, which is a very good thing. And a very diverse group too as well, number of African participants, Pacific Islands. New Zealand always sends people, so it should be a very productive meeting. We also have meetings with a number of Asia-Pacific ministerial events that are happening alongside the Bangkok IETF meeting, just so happens in terms of scheduling. I'm also doing outreach now to select the Chair of the IETF Noncom Committee, so that work is underway. And I'll be having conversations in Bangkok with some potential candidates for that. I'm happy to say that there is, there's some interest and some options, so that's, I think, quite positive. And then I will be attending the inaugural Maiori, am I saying this correctly, Maureen? Indigenous People IGF event in Wellington, New Zealand in May. And then I will see you all in Prague for first the PIR board meeting, then the ICAN meeting, and then the ISOC Annual General Meeting. So thank you. And as I said, always happy for feedback on these reports if there's any specific information you're looking for.
Speaking personally, I appreciate your focus on the goals and saying how each one of them is being addressed. I do want to go back to the work you're doing with John and the other parts of the kind of internal community to build up the the understanding of what each piece of the group is doing toward the mission as a whole. I think that's been something that's been ongoing for, at least since I rejoined the board, but it needs all of the attention we can give it because their support is so critical to everything else we do, that making sure that they understand how important they are to us and exactly what they're seeing as results from this support is critical. And I'm really appreciative that in the agenda for the joint meeting of the boards, that there is a focus on that. But obviously, the day-to-day work is done in the staff. And so the two different staff organizations getting a chance, or I guess three different staff organizations getting a chance to have a better understanding of that, I think is a good connective tissue for us to build into the overall body of the Internet Society. So thanks for that work. Any other comments to Sally? Okay, with that then, I think we're moving on to the organizational performance presentation.
Hi, everyone. My name is Kate.
Hi everyone, my name is Katie Bengard. I lead Strategy and Impact for the Internet Society. Um, Sally just spent some time talking to you about our progress so far and our priorities for 2025. What I'm going to do is do a bit of a look back where we take a few moments to celebrate the impact that we've made over the past five years, as well as speak to highlights, um, related to results that we achieved in 2024. Um, there is so much wonderful, um, activity effort. I'm so privileged to be able to represent um, the staff, the community and present this information to you. Um, a couple of things to note for, in terms of input, you would have received a very in-depth report related to success measures for 2024. There you can see a full outline, uh, by project of our success measures, our targets for 2024, as well as our results for 2024. Again, that's a very in-depth report, which I will take as read. If you have questions about any of those specific results, I can speak to those. There's a second report, um, which was shared publicly recently. It's our, um, five-year impact report. It's the first time we've ever published a report about the impact we've made across five years. So I'm personally extremely excited to, to bring that to your attention. The presentation I'm about to share with you will toggle between um, our five-year impact as well as our 2024 results. Um, it's really a moment to celebrate the impact that we've made to build, promote and defend the Internet. Um, and I know I'm excited to, to turn the page to look forward to our 2023 strategy. A couple of things to note as we walk through this presentation, uh, you'll notice some common themes, um, which I'll also point out, um, as we progress. Uh, the first thing is about strong results, which Sally noted earlier. Um, 2024, we saw really solid results, um, amidst a year that was full of transition, specifically a CEO transition. It was also, um, a year of change in terms of shifting our, from our 2025 strategy to our 2030 strategy and co-creating internally and collaboratively our programs to support our future work. Um, so against this backdrop of transition and change, our staff remained focused um, and delivered very solid results, uh, in collaborate, collaboration with our community and partners. The second theme, that leads me to my second theme, which has to do with collaboration, um, with our community and our partners. This is how we scale and over the past five years, we've seen wonderful evidence and had excellent lessons learned about how to approach this, uh, to ensure that we're effective, um, as we proceed, uh, with, with making impact in the future. Um, we know the, the power of, uh, the impact that one person can have when we think about the power that our collective, community, um, and partners can achieve, that's something that's very powerful to consider. And so I'll bring, I'll draw your attention to examples of that throughout this presentation. Um, and last is a theme related to evolution. As you consider this, um, you know, where we've been for the past five years, where we started, what was happening in the world in 2020 as we started this journey. Um, we have grown a tremendous amount and in many different ways as an organization. And so you'll see themes of evolution throughout this presentation as well. Um, and with that, we can move on to the next slide, please. Um, again, in the context of our 2025 strategy, which was focused to build, promote and defend the Internet, I'm happy to share some five-year results. Next slide, please. Um, these efforts, you can see, this is a mix of our connecting, um, our community network efforts, our, our work to support IXP's as well as our sustainable technical community's support. Um, and across the past five years, by the end, uh, from 2020 to the end of 2024, we supported eighty-five community networks. Um, this support, um, also includes, uh, over three million dollars in funds granted. Um, we've also supported fifty-six IXP's, um, either we have helped to establish or provided ongoing support to those IXP's and grow them and develop them in terms of traffic demand with over three point five million dollars in funds granted. And last, we've supported set forty-five technical communities with just over two hundred and thirty thousand dollars in funds granted. Um, so you can see here the snapshot of our efforts over the past five years. Um, but what I also want to note is, this is also, uh, the snapshot is a reflection of our model for connectivity. You can see that we, um, invest in, um, standing up and enhancing, um, CNS and IXP's, but we also invest a great deal in the technical communities and the people that sustain and support these communities in the long term. Um, and I just think that's a really important thing to note that we, it's not a single moment in time that we're present. We have, um, ways of supporting communities based on where they are in their life cycle towards connectivity. Next slide, please. Here you can see the results for 2024. Again, there's an in-depth report you can refer to related to these. Uh, we had a total of eleven success measures in supporting, in support of building the Internet. Ten of those success measures were achieved and one was not. Next slide. Here you can see the 2024 results, um, related to connecting the unconnected. We built, uh, four new community networks in Africa and Asia. And we improved existing networks, um, a total of six. This actually exceeded our, our targets for this year. We had opportunity to invest more and so we did. And so we ended up supporting, our original target was to support, build and support six and we built and supported ten. Um, another thing to note related to this project, um, has to do with the resource and offerings that we provide to, to people that want to connect. And one of the resources that was launched in 2023 was a do-it-yourself toolkit for community networks. And in 2024, we monitored the performance of this toolkit. We wanted to know how were people receiving it? Are they using it? How can we improve it? Um, and we observed that in fact, it is a useful resource. Um, we saw a couple, um, notable data points related to the performance of the toolkit. Um, one is that when we open a grant window, we see tremendous traffic of these types of resources, which is a really cool thing to note in terms of patterns and trends that we observe. Um, another thing is that with regards to this toolkit, people are spending a lot of time, when they get to the page and they stay on the page, they're spending a lot of time with the toolkit. Um, and last, we also, um, conducted a survey last year where we surveyed the users, the intended audience of the toolkit and they found it extremely, um, useful. Um, and part of that reason has to do with the nature in which it's, uh, organized. So it really helps the user go through the life cycle from point zero to, to sustaining of how to set up your own community network. And it's in plain language that people really, uh, received well and found it useful. So this is to say, for those resources that we, um, we make broadly available to anyone, we are not only launching them, but we're closely monitoring their performance so that we can improve moving forward. Next slide. Here you can see results in 2024 for the fostering sustainable peering infrastructure project. Uh, you can see we established two new IXP's, one in Paraguay and the other in Senegal. And we also enhanced an additional ten IXP's. Yeah, next slide. Um, some things to note related to just general highlights of what we're observing. That Pulse has indeed become an important resource for advocacy and governments, signaling its importance and credibility. There's a lot of data to support, um, the performance of Pulse. We see it mentioned year over year, uh, the number of references of the Pulse platform increases with last year, a total of one hundred and thirty-eight references. Um, Sally also mentioned how we have made, um, improvements to user experience and launched new tools in 2024. Um, and so we continue to see really, really good, um, uptake, both internally and externally of the Pulse tool. Another highlight to note is that AFPIF, um, achieved a significant milestone. Um, we transitioned um, our role as organizer. Um, and I believe that was, uh, there was a ceremony that Sally attended, uh, or actually probably hosted a little bit with the, the official handover. And so that actually happened late last year. And so this is a wonderful model where we are continuing our support of AFPIF, of this event, of the peering community. Um, and we are handing it over to the community itself to lead and sustain. And so that handover ceremony represented, um, that dynamic and how our role in, um, in supporting, uh, others to carry these initiatives forward. Next slide, please. We continue to, um, this is also related to, to local traffic, uh, and our work to increase local traffic. We have um, something called a fifty-fifty vision, where we want to see more traffic local and in turn that will improve affordability and resilience. We have had direct interventions specifically in Maldives and Bolivia. Um, a lot of collaboration with local partners in those countries, um, and our chapters as well. And so thanks to our Pulse tool, we've been able to observe that local traffic has increased in the Maldives to sixty-seven percent and Bolivia to sixty-two percent. Um, which is really a testament to, um, again, the theme of collaboration, all those parties that were involved. Um, and to see that this, uh, effort, you know, our efforts and interventions are having the intended impact and result that we seek. Next slide. This next section is related to, um, defending the Internet. Uh, next slide. You can see in, again, here we have this snapshot of our impact over the past five years. Um, this really represents the advocacy work that ranges from local efforts to educate and train policymakers, our work in the United Nations, efforts to lobby or advocate legislatures or parliaments and regional work as well. This is a well-rounded, um, portfolio of work that I'm happy to speak to. Uh, over the past five years, we have um, um, proposed or created over one hundred statements, open letters and submissions. Uh, fifty-plus policies we have opposed, um, that we can count. Um, Internet impact assessment to assessments completed over twenty over the past five years and filed six amicus briefs. This is a story here of the evolution of our company, of our organization that we have, you know, five years ago did not have Internet assessment impacts, uh, Internet impact assessments in place. We did not have an amicus brief, yes, and I will halt.
Uh, so this is a wonderful statistic, but I just have to ask, have we ever sent anything that said, "Go you, we love this policy"? Uh, and we probably want that, that up here. Since this is public record, we do want to say occasionally, we do actually support governments when they do the right thing. Um, and, uh, maybe that's not fifty times, but, uh,
And we do, we did, um, in preparation for this report, um, go back and look at, um, really solid policy outcomes where we weighed in, not necessarily in opposition, but we weighed in with a voice of how we thought that policy should evolve and we saw really good outcomes. But uh, yes, this is, um, the metric of things we were.
Well, I mean, obviously, a bunch of this is reactive, right? And it's, it's much, uh, much easier to, to, to understand that you need to react when it is in opposition. But I think for, for tracking purposes for the future, when we weigh in, uh, it would be really useful to know when we weigh in with a positive comment, because I think ultimately, our relationship to these governments will improve if some of the times we say, "Go you". Um, so ju- just, yeah, just very, it was such a, such a funny thing to see on this slide that I should have.
Okay, thank you for that. Um, it's worth noting that our guiding constructive, um, project is, is, uh, sets the tone for, um, providing that type of positive reinforcement and soon our, um, tracking and metrics will follow suit where we do capture those instances and have a more well-rounded view of this. Um, but again, back to this notion of how we've evolved, we, um, are so well-positioned now thanks to the tools and resources and programs that we've put in place over the past five years. Um, not only to address things, um, proactively but reactively as well. Um, so this is a really wonderful output to show our efforts, um, related to advocacy over the past five years. Next slide. Again, we see here results for 2024 and we had, uh, eleven success measures for 2024 and all eleven were achieved. Next slide. Um, we see evidence of others carrying our message forward. Um, one of our metrics in 2024 was the number of voluntary public statements and/or favorable policies by policymakers in support of strong encryption. Our target for 2024 was six and we ended up achieving twenty-two. Um, a big catalyst for this had to do with, um, the reaction in the EU, um, to the Hungarian presidency statement, um, uh, towards, um, and it was an anti-encryption stance that actually got a lot of reaction. And there was a snowball effect that we observed in the EU. Um, so we saw a really strong result in that encryption, um, project related to, um, public statements and others carrying our message forward. Um, we also, um, under our defending the Internet and the United Nations project, hit our target where, um, the Internet societies, uh, the Internet's best interests were well-represented in US processes and negotiations. That ten country delegations adopted pro-internet language in public documents in 2024. Again, a wonderful sig- signal that others are carrying our message forward. Um, next slide, please. Um, we are excited to see, um, the community-driven advocacy efforts. Um, and so we observed in 2024 in our Countering Internet Threats project, um, a hundred percent of our advocacy was conducted in collaboration with our community. That was very exciting to observe. We're thrilled by the eagerness of our community to participate in our advocacy efforts. Um, we are working hard, our staff, to draw in our community, both, um, and partners on a regional basis. Um, as well as, um, in the community itself, the community in the regions, yes. So, um, one of the ways we did that actually had to do with one-on-one outreach. We saw that that was a very effective way to target our chapters, to communicate to them about um, advocacy, what resources were available to them, to educate them on those resources, um, including the Internet Impact Assessment. Um, and observe these, these chapters take up efforts to advocate. Um, we saw a really wonderful example of this with the Malawi chapter, um, doing an Internet Impact Assessment overview before the Malawi Parliament. Um, so they took that training and they applied it in their local community and, and, and country to make change, positive change for the Internet. Um, we also, um, you know, are steadfastly committed to multi-stakeholder engagement. We see that in our stance in reaction to the Global Digital Compact, um, which we were involved in to the extent that we were able in 2024. Um, and although we ultimately did not endorse the GDC, we are, um, willing and, and ready to support and participate, um, in a multi-stakeholder implementation. Next slide. You might recognize someone in that picture. That is Sally, uh, at PTC most recently. Um, Sally spoke to the policymakers program a few minutes ago. Um, we continue to see really strong demand. It's kind of got a ground swell, uh, where people want to be a part of it. Um, and so this is a really wonderful story, which I can tell, or you can, you can, uh, explain who that person is with you in that picture, Sally.
Uh, I think this is Noi, yeah, um, from Tuvalu and she, uh, I had a, a bilateral meeting with her in Honolulu thanks to an introduction from Maureen. She's now the CEO of the Tuvalu Communications Corporation, I believe it's called, the major telecom, um, provider there in Tuvalu. Uh, and we were talking about ways we might collaborate, what are the challenges in, in Tuvalu and so forth. And, um, she's quite, quite, um, strong technically. That was very clear, very quickly in the conversation. And I asked her about the IETF and I mentioned that we had this policymaker program. And she looked at me and smiled and she said, well, I was one of the, I was a fellow to the IETF back in two thousand and eight and Fred Baker was her mentor. She's still in touch with him. She still participates remotely occasionally in the IETF and has contributed to apparently some IPV six drafts. That's her area of interest. And so it was a really nice little moment to see how the fellowship program from all those years ago, you know, is still relevant to her and the work that she's doing. We also met with Kila, who is the head of the regulatory agency in PNG. And he was one of our policymaker guests right around that same time at the IETF, one of the IETF meetings in Vancouver. And as a result of that meeting, went on to support the IXP in PNG and is now very interested in partnering with us to figure out how we strengthen that IXP in PNG. So that was a lot of acronyms right there. So really useful ways in which the relationships developed in those programs go on to I mean, these are people that are moving up in their careers and in their countries and and have significant positions of impact years later that we we can't always predict.
Thank you. I love that example from two thousand and eight to two thousand and twenty four. Yeah, this is a wonderful example of the outputs of our policymaker program, the valued connections. And to see the arc of these relationships is wonderful. In fact, our policymaker program has had such demand recently that we are considering ways to host these sessions outside of IETF. That's something we'll explore later in two thousand and twenty five. But it is a possibility to address the the demand that we see for this program. The other thing to note is related to amicus. As I noted, amicus was was something that was launched within our past five years, maybe four years ago. In two thousand and twenty four, it's worth noting that we submitted four briefs, one of which was outside of the United States in Mexico. That was one of our targets for two thousand and twenty four was to expand our reach beyond the US. In addition, another one of our our targets that might be a little more qualitative for two thousand and twenty four had to do with increasing awareness about these briefs. So the briefs in and of themselves certainly achieve that, but we were very proactive last year in terms of communications, blog posts, emails, other things to external lists that we would post to sending directly to partners and people we know across the industry, all in an effort to raise awareness about these issues and as well as our intervention. Next slide. NDSS, this is the Network and Distributed Systems Security Symposium. We have been hosting this for over thirty years. We continue to see really exciting results for this event. Last year, we maintained our position as number two, the NDSS as number two computer security research conference in the world. The event last year in two thousand and twenty four also sold out. We hit max capacity at six hundred people. And I'm happy to share, you know, hot off the press news from NDSS last week. There were six hundred and ninety seven registrants for the event. We've received early feedback from delegates, workshop chairs, sponsors and others that it was a wonderful event. And it's worth noting that we see that the event grow, one of the metrics we observe as well is the number of papers submitted for NDSS. In two thousand and twenty three, the total number of papers was ninety. In two thousand and twenty four, it was one sixty. And in two thousand and twenty five, two hundred and forty papers were submitted. So we see the increasing growth and excitement around this event. Next slide. Scaling our impact. Again, this is one of the key themes that we observed over the past five years, how important it is to collaborate with our community and partners. And what we'll see here in these next slides is some examples of how we do that. Next slide. This is a snapshot of by the numbers at the end of two thousand and twenty four. We had nearly a hundred and thirty thousand individual members, one hundred and thirty one chapters and SIGs, eighty two org members, organization members, ninety seven partners, three hundred and twenty five alumni. And we saw that eighty one percent of chapters that received grants to support, received grants to support non admin efforts, which is wonderful to see that level of engagement. These are grants such as Beyond the Net and possibly CN funding that they might have pursued. Also of note, the alumni, I'll get into this a little bit later, but consider three hundred and twenty five alumni after just a few years of really thoughtfully investing and being very proactive about nurturing this group of people. It's wonderful to see that we've achieved three hundred and twenty five in just a few short years. It's an exciting thing to see because it signals what is possible over the next five years. Also of note for this, we saw of our org members, our eighty two org members, we saw forty one percent participating in advocate advocacy efforts. Our target was twenty five percent. And one of the key things that happened in two thousand and twenty four was the launch of the ISOC Insiders Program, which was a one on one pairing matchmaking with staff and key points of contact from org members. And so we believe that this was a key driver to see that result in participation from our org members participating in our advocacy efforts. Next slide. Here you can see for this portfolio of work in two thousand and twenty four, we had two thousand and twenty two success measures. Twenty were achieved and two were not achieved. Next slide. Again, back to the alumni. We have this program is under the guidance of a new head of alumni, a full time dedicated resource. We're seeing growth with, you know, the fellowships, we see strong collaborations across, I think with our programs, our awardees, our IHOP winners and others are also connected with our alumni. There's cross mentorship. So this is a really rich area with high degree of collaboration with different parts of our community and and organization. Next slide. We know that healthy and diverse chapters are key to building local communities that thrive. And here we see chapter evaluation results where ninety five percent of our chapters are engaged and effective. In two thousand and twenty five, we improved our evaluations process, both the tool that we use as well as creating flexibility in in the schedule of the evaluation. So you can see the diversity of our chapters and the distribution regionally. So we've got thirty seven chapters in Africa, seventeen in APAC, thirty in Europe, twenty five in LAC, three in the MENA region and eight in North America. Next slide. Our local, our training model has grown and evolved so much over the past five years. We've taken special focus on a train the trainer approach. Back to this notion of force multipliers. We trained more than three hundred tutors since two thousand and twenty one, and in turn, they have trained an additional ten thousand seventy eight learners. So this is again a model for scaling. This is a really interesting and unique approach to achieving broad scale and broad reach, but maintaining a local and personalized approach to learning. And with that, that concludes next slide, the end of that presentation. Thank you for your attention and I welcome your questions and comments.
Victor.
Question here. I love like I just kind of looking at the, you know, the chapter help and kind of distribution. Sorry, you guys can hear me. I I love to see, especially in Africa, the number of chapters we have there and working healthy. Anybody else wonder APAC, why like, given the size of that continent and and the, you know, and the population? Why, you know, what would it take to kind of see more pop up there? Is it just the political climates? Is it the, you know, is it something else you get going? Just just it just strikes me as I think about it. Don't always think about these things, but as I kind of get to get in there.
It's a good question. And we are spending a quite a bit of time this year focusing on our outreach in Asia Pacific. You know, Chris and I will both be in the region. Chris is spending a lot more time there after Bangkok. I'll be back in May. We have a new chapter engagement manager in the region. We have recently elevated two people in the region to more senior positions to try to to do more outreach, all in an effort to to address some of this because I think it is a huge region. And, you know, driving a lot of innovation, obviously, coming out of Asia Pacific. And so we've been paying a lot of attention to that. And I don't know that I have exactly the answer, but it is something that we've got a good eye on. And and as I said earlier, a particular focus on Pacific Islands because the connectivity challenges there are are considerable. They're different than what we have addressed in other parts of the world. So we've got some learning to do there. But I agree with you. We we would like to see this number go up.
Yeah. And and by the way, don't take, don't take them comment as, hey, what are you gonna do about it? No, no, no. It's more like, hey, this is a thing. Do we share this disposition? And like, yeah, there's something to be dug into. That's
Agreed. Yeah.
Okay, currently have Barry, Caleb, Russ and Maureen in queue. Barry.
Thanks for the report, Katie. Very, very impressive. I wanted to go back to where you talked about the papers, submitted papers for NDSS. But it sounded like the number, you said submitted papers, but it sounded like the numbers were accepted papers. So I just wanted to check on on that.
I believe these are submitted papers, which is at least showing interest in the pipeline, but they're not all accepted.
So the I was there. So there were a little over two hundred papers presented, accepted. There were thirteen hundred papers submitted. So the number, that's why I wanted to highlight. They there were more than twice as many papers submitted this year as last year. Last year was something like six hundred fifty and this year there were over thirteen hundred papers submitted. It's the interest has just mushroomed. It's really good.
Caleb.
Thank you. So I have an observation, a full observation based on what Victor mentioned. Africa has fifty four countries, right? And I saw that seven there. And obviously, that said, seven includes chapters that are still going through rejuvenation, pre rejuvenation. Because in another report, I saw thirty one active chapters. And I want to believe that the remaining six are those that are still going through rejuvenation and all of that. So just trying to connect all the numbers. But the emphasis of what I'm saying is there's still a lot more work to be done because Africa has fifty four countries and we have just that seven, right? And so while that same strategy you're planning for Asia Pacific is ongoing, please to think about Africa in that equation. But the main crops of what I want to talk about is the policymaker highlights that you had in your report, both of you. Here is a suggestion that I think I have. I feel that you will have more impact when you try to domesticate and localize some of these issues. Not saying you should take it away from the IETF, regional meetings and things like that. But again, if you keep putting it at IETF meetings, there is a strong possibility that you will not reach a bigger audience of those policymakers. And here is where I see the connection between how you work with chapters also in this regard. Now, if you try to regionalize some of these things, most of the issues that policymakers have, they can connect it within their region. So take, for example, the African Internet Summit that you guys have, or maybe the African Internet Summit that the one being called co organized with Afrenic back in the days and stuff like that. Now, if there are specific policymaking discuss around that, I feel that ISOC can be part of it. Now, that way you can reach out to more people within the region, right? Because they can participate. Now, on the other hand, I also feel that ISOC can also collaborate with NRIs, right? National regional initiatives around the IGF space, right? Such that when they are having, because I know that they have a parliamentary and segment that they usually have. When you're having some of these things, it's always good to not just have the politicians in the room, right? One thing I've realized, especially maybe from the region where I come from, the politicians will move on, they will probably lose election in the next cycle or they will come back again. But those who have continuum in the power dynamics are the top civil servants who will likely not retire very soon. So having them get involved, just like I like the the picture that Sally posted about someone working in the civil service, the telecom civil service and and then it shows that you're connecting with the civil servants. So bottom line of what I'm saying is I'd like to see more ways where we can bring this down to the regional level of, let's say, ECOWAs or West Africa or things. And then you can engage more at that level. You can get more people. In fact, the advantage of it is that the visa issues which you mentioned will not be there because most Africans can also participate at a regional meeting without having to stress themselves for visas.
So I I wasn't sure if anybody was going to respond to that. Oh, okay. You're you're next in queue anyway. So go ahead.
So the program started because things were being said about the IETF at ITU meetings that were false. And Sally said to one person, have you ever been to an IETF meeting? And they said, no. And she said, well, come and see and you'll see that what you're saying is not the case. And so I think we need to continue that. But I have certainly no objections to expanding it, but it's a different focus. So it needs to be a different program to say the technical work being done at the IETF for the Internet is important as well as the ITU meetings, right? And what you're talking about is is something different to address the policy in different parts of the world. And and that's something that I just think you can't just take the cookie cutter that we already have for the IETF thing and apply it.
Was that the focus of your original intervention? Okay, so keep your thing up. Does anybody else want to speak to this topic?
Yeah, I I think I get the part of where you're coming from, that it's strictly focused on the work of IETF and all of that, which leads us to a previous conversation where we've probably had here where we've said there is no possibility of even IETF ever going to Africa. Yeah, it's the possibility is so
So one would be to host. That is not this board's responsibility, right?
No, of course I know. Of course I know. I'm just, you know, reacting to that. But it's it's still boils down to the fact that we'd like to see more participation and how see how you can expand that program more. And thank you so much for all the ad work you guys are doing. There's something that I've been told while growing up that when the reward for good There's something that I've been told while growing up that when the reward for good work and hard work is more work. So keep at it. Thanks.
So Sally has another thing on this point and then to Russ.
So I, thank you for that feedback, Caleb. We, we are experimenting, as Katie said, this year with a request from the Australian government for us to host an IETF policymakers program without the IETF. It's a little weird, but we're going to do that in Australia this year. We may be able to pull in some of the Pacific Islands into that. We're going to see. We're still figuring out the logistics. One of the reasons we can do that is that there's a very strong local technical community in Australia that we can pull in as speakers. Because one of the things we do in this program is we try to have fewer ISOC staff speakers and pull in more from the IETF community. Because if you want to know how a piece of the internet works, it's really useful to have some of the people who are actually working on that come in and give those presentations. It also builds the interaction between the policymakers and the technical community in a way that we have seen be productive outside of the meeting. Because they send messages and say, hey, we're thinking about this. How does this really work? Would this be a bad idea? Those relationships keep going. So we are going to experiment that with that this year in Australia and see if we can pull this off outside of the IETF. If we go beyond Australia, the challenge that we're going to have is the ability to pull in the technical speakers. And, and we just haven't figured that out yet, but you know, we're not opposed to it. We're just, this is the first time we've had the formal invitation to do it, and it's great. We're very excited by that. And that speaks to the success of the program. We're going to see if we can take it on the road, so to speak. But, so we'll report back probably next year when we, after the Australia program and see how it goes.
Russ?
So the origins of NDSS come from the IRTF. It started, it was first by the Privacy and Security Research Group. And I was the second program chair. So it's awesome to hear how that has grown. Draw, drawn in so many academics. But I wanted to ask about the not achieved part where it was published, the Policy and Adptice Toolkit. Was there anything that we could have done to help you here? And that's really the question.
Yeah, so this was, the Policy Toolkit, we decided to do a little differently than we had done the first toolkit that Katie mentioned. And the way we went about it was to actually go to some policy events at CTEL in Latin America, the Asia Pacific Telecommunity Meeting in APAC. The Africa meeting, we had to postpone because there were some logistical challenges. So we didn't end up doing that until later in the year, which pushed off the timeline for the toolkit. And what they wanted, the team wanted to do was actually have the toolkit developed collaboratively with the policymakers so that we would get a really good understanding of the kinds of questions they wanted answered in such a toolkit. So that worked really well, but it did delay the publication. Just earlier this week, I got a preview of the toolkit and it looks really, really good. And it should be published at the end of Q1. So we're, actually, no, it shouldn't be published in time for us to go to Bangkok and speak again to the APT. So it should be published this week. So it's on, it's on track for this year, but we missed the deadline, and that's why we missed the success measure.
Thank you. I have Maureen and then Kathleen.
Thank you. I just wanted to follow on from what Victor was mentioning about Pacific. And that, one of the things that I did want to point out, acknowledge is the strong support that we've had in the 20 years that I've been involved in the Pacific from the ISOC in Australia and also Internet New Zealand, which is related to ISOC. But with Internet New Zealand, they've just sort of gone through a big management change. So they're only just basically at the rejuvenation sort of group there. But I'm really pleased that Sally will be going to New Zealand. I hear Chris is going to go and visit ISOC Australia. And it would be really good for them to actually sort of like just be encouraged to continue that support. Because I think that that's the sort of thing that we need, not just with PKI SOC actually, but sort of like it more across, I mean Papua New Guinea has its own, you know, has got its own sort of like system going there. And, you know, it's a really big organization and they're really big on policy, which is something that a lot of the other smaller islands really need support in. And that's something that PKI SOC could, could help with. Thanks.
Thanks, Maureen. Kathleen?
Thank you. And thank you, Katie, for the overview. It was helpful to have your commentary on top of just looking at slides. I wanted to go back to the amicus briefings. And Chris, maybe we can chat offline as well. And in thinking about, you know, the UK is not going to change their stance, right? Because of the differences over time, like it'll take time to get that type of change to happen for something like encryption. And it, if you think back to the response in the UK versus the US post Snowden, UK expected that level of surveillance, right? And so if the people don't rise up and the people aren't looking at it more from an individualistic and more privacy centered view, like happens in the US. And Germany is a great example for obvious reasons, right? Then it's hard to see the type of change we would like to see because of the cultural impacts. And then even if you think about like Brexit, why did, why did that go through the way it did? And then in the US, the recent, you know, some are okay with some things versus some are not. And some of this goes to exposure of who travels and who doesn't, who has this more global experience and who doesn't. So I know this is bigger necessarily than ISOC, but that cultural piece makes a big difference in terms of having the type of influence towards more encryption than. And so when you mentioned engaging local communities in the response, that's critical because the government's going to respond more to their own people, right? And their own voice versus external parties. And I did sign on to the letter as well. I believe in this. But I think some of those impacts are something that feed into this larger picture. So I just wanted to shed some thought on that. And I know I've mentioned it before, but I, in one of the courses I teach, students have to write up the differences on surveillance. And I go through grading these three times a year, right? So I just graded a whole, you know, with updates where they're looking at all of the laws between four different nations and societies and cultural influences. And the impacts are very real. So, so that's something I have a continued update on, thanks to that activity.
We can debate the whys and wherefores of UK culture and why we're such a subservient group of people off board. But just in terms of kind of what we can do. At the end of last year, we hired Al Gaff as our Director of Community Communications because of his experience in managing communities and the work we need him to do with our chapters and org groups. But also because he has actually come from ORG, the Digital Rights Group in the UK. So he has firsthand experience of understanding how we drive the message of digital rights and privacy, et cetera, in the UK. So as we look at how we can support more, his ability to help us think through that will be invaluable.
Thank you.
And I want to kind of go back to something we were talking about earlier. There are definitely cases here where we can make alliances with people who have strong voices that are recognized within the United Kingdom. And I think one of the issues that is always of concern to any government is responsiveness to their own to the concerns of their own citizenry. And certainly there are lots and lots of people in, in UK and UK organizations like Article 19, et cetera, that have serious concerns around it. I don't know if we currently are part of, oh, yes, we are, EDRI, which is one of the groups that coordinates this whole society positions in in relation to digital rights. And, and in particular, they might be a good coalition to be the front speaker for this, this kind of thing. Are there any other questions for Katie? Thank you very much for the presentation and for the longer report. There were a couple of questions in the chat on the longer report, but I think Sally has already answered them, so. Great. So it looks like next up, Charles.
Yes. With this part of the agenda, we're going to be talking about, oh, I'm going to give the Governance Committee Report. So essentially, we're going to be talking about the amendments that we are recommending for the Governance Committee Charter and also the NOMCOM Charter. So we are recommending the board to adopt the amendments to the charters of both of the committees I mentioned. And in the board effect, you will see a memo that outlined those changes and the reason we, the committee has been, is proposing these changes. I'll quickly go over them because it's an open session. I'm not sure whether the memo has been also circulated. But it's not, it's pretty straightforward. For the NOMCOM, basically, we will remove a clause that mentioned that the slate for the election will be approved by the board and replace it with the full set of nominations will be shared with the board for information and feedback. Basically, this is what's happening currently and in the recent past. And the board actually do not approve the slate. And in general, if there's any feedback or discussion that the board would like to provide to the NOMCOM, we will do that. So if we want to change this particular, so basically, we're trying to make sure that the, the charter for the NOMCOM reflects the actual way that things have been conducted. And there are a number of small clarity changes that I wouldn't go into. But basically, you know, just wording and, and the punctuations and so on, to make sure that they are more they are clear, they are more clear. So besides that, we also have a change for the Governance Committee Charter.
Before you go off that, I actually have a question.
Okay, sure.
So one of the changes here is liaison with the Internet Architecture Board to ensure that an individual is a candidate in no more than one constituency election at the same time. So the way our rules are currently written, the IB makes their selection by a process of their own choosing. We don't, we don't actually write it in, in our system. So the only thing that we would be able to do at this point is to say, here's our set of candidates. Is there an overlap? Since the candidates are public in the, in the IETF nominations committee process, I don't think we actually need a liaison to get that data. It's all on, on, on the data tracker. You can look at it on the IETF nominations page. So I'm not sure this is needed.
Which is needed? Do you mean the?
So if I look at the red line in five responsibilities, it says liaison with the Internet Architecture Board to ensure that an individual is a candidate in no more than one constituency election at the same time. We can't tell them not to consider somebody who's in our process because of the, the way it's structured in the bylaws. We can, however, say we won't consider somebody if they are in the IB pool for the the IETF NOMCOM process. But we don't need to liaison with them to discern that because it's a public list. So I don't think this is actually needed. And I see, I have Brian and Barry.
Yeah, maybe we will hear from Barry and Brian. Might be on about the same point.
Yeah, so the two things for me, one, in response to Ted, the only thing the liaison would be able to do would be get, would be to get the information a little bit earlier before it's made public. But that's, that's like days. It's not that big of a deal. So it's not, I don't, like, like you were saying, I think, you know, we could have an agreement with them that, you know, as to how we would handle overlaps, but that's, that's relatively simple. The question I actually wanted to ask is the, the first red line in here in section five, where you say this is not the practice. And so taking it out makes it align with the practice. The other way to do that is to actually align a practice with what the charter says. Did the committee consider that approach as opposed to changing the charter text itself?
You mean for the committee, you mean for the board to actually approve?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm just curious if the committee discussed it.
I don't think we specifically discussed it because that is not the way that it has been, as I said, conducted in recent past. Because basically, the board would provide the feedback if there is any. And normally, there hasn't been. And if we, if there is, so, so a part of it is also probably because if we do approve it, that means we will probably have to have a resolution at the board and so on. And we're not sure, and I'm not sure, we didn't discuss it. But I'm not sure if that is proper or the uptake of it would be proper. Because that would mean that like the board is approving a slate of candidate rather than at the NOMCOM level. Ted?
So if I understand this correctly, the procedures don't actually say that the board will do it, but the charter said they will liaise with the board to do it. So this is actually aligning the charter with the way the procedures are currently written. So it wouldn't be the case that we would be able to just, you know, continue to do this. We'd have to go and update the procedures to align with this.
And that's where I was going with the question is, did, did the, did the committee consider that you could make edits to the procedures to align with the charter or make the opposite? And that's, I don't think one way or the other is, is all that material. I was just curious whether or not both options.
I think this is the simpler pattern, but I'm talking over Barry, who was actually
I'm sorry, Ted.
Who's next?
Go ahead. You're responding to this threat, so go ahead.
Are you responding to this threat?
So I'm about to leave for a quick meeting now. And I already have set to quickly just make my intervention before I leave.
Okay, go ahead then.
So my first, sorry, I do apologize, but you can feel free to discuss it after I leave. I do have a bit of issue with the proposal that the full NOMCOM list be shared with the entire board. Why do I have an issue with that? There has been this conversation even at the level of Compensation Committee about privacy of people who apply to, for rules and things like that. I also feel the same rule applies here. The reason also is that if the full list is shared with the entire board, it gives, take for example, sorry that I want to use this as, if a board member is having a second term interest, right? And then the NOMCOM comes share the entire full list. It gives that board member an advantage ahead of time. And there is also a likely possibility that they might have powers to even influence who their competitors could likely be, right, on the slate. So I just see that leaving that, that discretion to the work of NOMCOM, which is not like secrecy or anything, still allow, gives them the independence to make the best judgment and the best decisions that they can make within the confines of NOMCOM without sharing that list. When they are done, one of the things we did at our own part was that when we're done with our own NOMCOM committee work, we shared the entire list with the board about those who qualify for the slate, not those who, the entire list of those who are applied. It should just be the list of those who the NOMCOM thinks they qualify for the role. So I have something now, but you can go ahead. I will catch up with the answers.
I think that point is I, I think that point is partly to respond to what Brian mentioned, right? So from the perspective of the NOMCOM, probably they would want as little interference, if I can use that word as possible. So I guess I take that as a part of a response to what Brian has brought up. So, Barry?
Yeah, I think I agree with what Caleb just said. I don't see the value of having the NOMCOM share the full list of applicants with the board, only the ones that they've selected. But to the other one, I, I see some value in having the liaison be able to sort of, to talk to the IAB and say, this person who's put their name in before anything becomes public, this person who's put their name in has also put their name in on our side. Let's talk to him and find out which side he really wants to run on. Because the point of this isn't to say that they can't pick the same person. It's to say that they can't consider the same person. And I, and I think that's, that's where we, that's where this was intended to go. We don't want someone being considered by our NOMCOM and considered by the IAB at the same time, regardless of whether they're selected.
So because of the way the, the procedures are written, we can say we will choose not to consider somebody who is, who is putting themselves forward in another process. We cannot say what they do. So.
But we can liaise with them. That's the point.
I, I'm, what I'm, what I'm pointing out here is that that comes across as us trying to influence them. Because we're saying this person is in, in both processes and we want them to choose. The, the way to do this that, that doesn't create that situation of apparent influence is to say, if the person is in the public list of nominees, then the NOMCOM, our NOMCOM will take it into account and they won't be considered by our NOMCOM. And that, you know, we can make that clear to people that if you are being considered in the ITF side, you, you won't be considered by our NOMCOM because we prefer people not to be in both. But we can't actually cause them to do it. Right? We can, we can do it ourselves through that process, but we, we don't need a liaison for that. And we can introduce a liaison to say, just FYI, we took this person out of our list because he's in your list. But I don't see that that's very useful. And because their list is entirely public in the first place, this adds a coordination step that I don't think we actually need. Personal comment.
Well, and, and just to even add on to that, Ted, our, our process is staggered after theirs anyways. So I, I think we're in pretty good shape.
I actually think that Ted brought up a good point because the liaison, liaison with IAB does imply that we are trying to ask them to make a decision one way or another. Having worked on other NOMCOM, typically, the the situation where one candidate may apply for two positions or, or the same position from two different constituencies would be to first to ask the person to choose and make sure that they choose only one. So maybe we would probably be better off changing the language to reflect that, that we are liaising or the NOMCOM, our NOMCOM would be asking the person who happened to be, let's say, applying for one of the two, one of, one of our, you know, positions on, on out, on the two constituents and at the same time with IB, IETF, to ask him or her to choose rather than the language here, which would be implying that we are sort of interfering with IB. I wonder if that is Ted, you're wronging what?
Again, I, I think the, the question we have to ask ourselves is how is it that this liaison influences the IAB selection process? Because our process is not supposed to influence their selection process. It's completely independent.
Right.
And so I think introducing something that's meant to influence their process by saying, we want you to go to this candidate with us and have them choose is, is somewhat problematic. I, there may be a way of drafting this to say that if somebody presents a nomination to us and we see that they have already been nominated by the other process, we will ask them, we'll notify them that they will not be considered in ours because they're in the other one unless they notify us that they have dropped the other. And I think that's, that doesn't, again, it doesn't, liaison with IAB, it gets what you want, but it's a discussion between us and the candidate. And, and I think that would be.
That's exactly what I was saying.
Oh, okay. It's, I misunderstood you then because it sounded like you wanted us to tell the IAB.
No, 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 that's exactly what I'm not saying. I'm saying that it would be better in my, in by having worked with other NOMCOM that they would, they would first ask the candidate, you're not supposed to, to apply for two positions or you're not supposed to do this. And so are you aware of that? And ask the candidate to make a choice rather than.
So I, I think it would only be after we have made this update that a candidate could know that they weren't supposed to apply for both. So I think once we have made the update and they understand that applying for both will result in this conversation, then, and up until now, as far as I'm aware, there was absolutely nothing to prevent you from putting your hat in the ring from, from both directions. And there were people who probably did that. Yeah. And, and so I, I think if you want to make this change, we have to make it entirely within the process that's in our own procedures.
If we are going to.
Totally agree with Ted because NOMCOM is an independent body from our side, so nobody can influence. Yeah, I totally agree with Ted because now, in my perspective, NOMCOM is an independent body from the ISOC. So nobody can, even the liaison cannot influence that. So we are dealing with the candidate and the NOMCOM. So it should be typically like partial to the IAB, UAF, EDF, whatever it is. So we should act independent.
Laura?
Yes, so this person who was in this situation, so I can talk about how it works in practice, which was exactly what we are now proposing, which is that the chair of the NOMCOM called me and said, which one do you want to do?
Yeah.
Please don't do both because it means to lots of interviews and more bureaucracy, which is really the reason to not do it, frankly. So, yep. So I think formalizing that would be a good idea.
Russ?
Sorry, Russ, I hadn't seen you.
I, I know that this has happened before, having been on the IAB, that we had candidates proceeding down both tracks. And different years, it's been worked out different ways. And do we really need to prevent it as long as we don't both select the same person?
So there's, there's a race condition here because of the way the announcements work. And I think what, what Laura was just saying is if both of them have to interview them and then change their positioning in, in this based on coordination, that's more complicated than simply ruling it out. If you simply rule it out, it's, it's simpler to do and it, it functionally means that one of the selection criteria in V here would be that you not be a candidate for selection by some other process. There is a corner case here. Yay, corner cases isn't engineering fun. And that is the one thing that this doesn't discuss is the corner case where the, the board makes its own selection. Because we rarely, rarely exercise that. In fact, Fongke is the only person, as far as I'm aware, that's ever been selected for the board under that process. So the fact that this doesn't deal with it doesn't give me much hajjata, but I will point out that there, there is that risk.
Yeah, I think it's also a question of fairness and that we don't want to create a situation that sort of encourages, if not allow, if not encourages people to go for as many categories as possible to, for, for one particular election. So so I think the, the the suggestion here for us to probably even for the governance committee to consider putting in some sort of guideline to the NOMCOM to make sure that each candidate would be applying for each cycle, one position might be something that we should be considering because right, right now, I'm, I'm just finding out that, I'm just finding out that, okay, we're talking about a race conditions between the IAB candidate and the other, and, and a candidate from the, the other categories. There's nothing to prevent at the moment, some, someone from going for, let's say, chapters and OM at the same time, which I would consider to be a similar situation if we are going to be putting an advice to the potential candidate to choose one category only. So that might be something that we at the governance committee would need to consider to put in for future if there is going to be fear for all the three categories.
Respectfully, I disagree. We actually do have candidates that can apply under both for very legitimate reasons, right? We have people who have been strong members of particular organizational members who are also very strong in the chapter community. This has happened in the past, for example, from Japan, where I believe Hiroshi was first put up by the chapters and then by an organizational member. Why?
In the same cycle, in the same year?
I, I, I'm not sure, but I will, I will, I will point out that what happens in that case is the NOMCOM decides where to put it. It is not the case that there are two processes because it's the same NOMCOM for chapter and org. And they can say to themselves, okay, we've read both. We're going to interview them, but the only slate we're going to consider them for after the interview is this one or the at one. Because the NOMCOM at its discretion can decide whether they go for zero or one, you don't actually need to formalize it because in that particular case, the same body is making the decision. I think that's different from the case that we were talking about before, where the issue is that two different bodies are making the decision and you have the truly passimal outcome that they both picked the same person. And we now have just Laura and we're now missing either an IAB person or an OMAC person because there's only one vote, voting trustee where there are two slots. That won't happen with the NOMCOM because the NOMCOM itself can prevent that by making the appropriate decision. Now realistically, if you put yourself in for both, you'd have to have a very strong reason to be a good candidate for both before you'd be considered. But it's not, it, it has happened. And I don't think we want to rule it out. We just need to be aware that it's then incumbent on the NOMCOM to sort it out.
Yes, but, but I think what we might need to rule it out is that the same person end up on the slate for both. But let's say both chapter and organizational members. So, but, but in any case, I think this is something that, that we're not going to resolve at this meeting in the board. We have to take it back to all the comments, including Ted and everybody else's or back to the governance committee to decide whether or not for this particular NOMCOM revision, if we're not going to be approving it at this meeting, then we'll have to go back and reword it or take into consideration to see whether or not we'll change it and so on, or change it in a different way and bring it back to the board. But we're not, but, but I mean, I mean, we, we, these are all good comments, but probably we're not trying to get to the bottom of it in this meeting anyway.
Okay, is he a Luna in the queue?
Just to ask the clarifying question, Ted, the original charter has monitored the nominations and petition process. So is the petition process also, if we address all of that and the guidelines, is that going to take care of the petition process or do we need to also include something for the petition process?
That's an awfully good point. Victor, you're in queue.
So I had two points and that was one of them. So I'm glad we're thinking alive. But the first point, because I, I wasn't sure about that. I was like, well, what's going to happen? Because someone could say, well, why am I not being considered? Because they won't necessarily know that, hey, they were in the other one. Although back to the first point, I, I agree, Ted, with what you had said earlier. I, I think we need to take that, is that we can't influence the ITS process. It's designed to be separate. But I think because of timing, you, like you said, it can be considered in terms of, is that because the, the NOMCOM for, for that, the ISOC NOMCOM can consider that fact, okay, that person is in there. And like you said, it's a public list. You can see who's up and who's not, and that can be part of the consideration. So I get that. And I think trying to overly influence it kind of breaks the intention of why it was separate in the first place. I do, and I do see your point that with, with, if it comes from the chapters and, and, and organization members, that's different because it is a common body that can kind of wade through that and kind of deal with it. So again, you know, I think the only thing, as I reasoned through what you were saying, or the points, was the, the petition process, can someone petition? And would it be valid to adjudicate that petition because they're already considered for the other? I guess, but then again, they wouldn't know they were selected or not selected by the time. I don't know. It's complicated.
Yeah. So the complicating thing here is if somebody petitions for both, right? I think if somebody finds themselves in the election and petitions for the other position, then the other body is likely to go, that's a bit odd. No, don't do that. But if somebody petitioned for both and somehow ended up on the slate for both as a result of the petition, you'd end up in this silly state where they, they could theoretically be standing for each election as a result of the petition process. So I agree that, that that needs to be resolved. And I think that answers the question I was about to ask you from the chair, which was, do you want some time to try and get your committee together and work it out this weekend and come back? Or do you want to do this later? And I think that's a complicated enough question that probably it needs later.
Yes, I think we need some time. I'm not sure whether or not we can get it in a day before the end of the next meeting to come to, because especially with the petition issue is probably pretty complicated and the change might be pretty more drastic than we had anticipated before because either that there would be another process to, to, for the NOMCOM to vet or to finally vet again the, the, the petition result. Or otherwise, I mean, we could end up with what you're saying, you know, some particular possibility of some, somebody through petition in both slates to be a candidate in the end for both.
Wind up in all three, but there's no rush for this. This can't.
Yeah, no rush for this. Yeah, we, we, for the, the slate for this year is finalized, so there's no rush with. So I think with this probably is better for us to go back and visit it and try to think of all the potential possible scenarios and loopholes before we bring it back to the, to the board.
Okay. Is there anything else from the governance committee we need to deal with?
There, the, there's also a change on the governance committee charter to, let's see, let me see. Yes, to yeah, basically to say that, that we will provide the guideline that we provide to NOMCOM to be sent also to the IAB to inform them on the, 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 because of the reason, because basically we normally would provide to the NOMCOM some directions as to the kind of profile or geographic preferences and so on of the candidates that we like to see for coming through the NOMCOM. So we thought that it would be a good idea to also provide the same guideline to IAB to inform them of the, of, of the thinking of the governance committee for the ISOC board on behalf of the ISOC board so that they could take consideration of these, of our consideration. But without, but of course, we also are very aware that what we are saying that to them, what we're, what we are providing to them does not in any way obligate them to take our advice, but they're still totally independent in their selection. So that's the that's the only clause that we put into the governance committee charter to enable us to provide them the same uh advice.
I I and just to be clear, I don't think this has the same issue at all because there's a process on the I B side to take advice about the candidates. And so uh taking advantage of their process to send it um i- is fine by me. If there's a if there's an issue in the future where they change their process to stop taking advice, we would run into an issue, but that's some other governance committees. Russ, you disagree?
Yes, I just think we need to clearly mark it as this is what our nominating committee is using just for your information, as long as it's clearly marked.
I think the actual text says it's for their information.
Good.
It says to the I B to inform their work. Uh, do you want to read the resolution?
Think our resolution would be somewhat altered. Uh, so I just read it without. So, uh, yes, the proposed resolution two thousand twenty five X is that approval of the amendments to the governance committee charter, whereas the governance commit uh uh no, I'll skip this part. I'll I'll skip the second one, right? And then and then this one. Sorry. Whereas the governance committee recommends the amending the governance committee charter to ensure that the governance committee broadly distribute the guidelines to the nominations committee, this one. Actually, this one. The second paragraph and the third paragraph, I said.
Right. Let me suggest, given in interest of time, uh, that that we bring this back and take this.
Yeah, I'd probably bring it back because the wording has changed, has to be.
Yeah, I think this will be a fairly simple change, but we probably don't want to do it on the fly.
We can do it in the afternoon.
And if you can just send the updated text to Lauren, we'll we'll take it as an A O B later in the meeting. Okay, I think that brings us to the close of the um uh this morning session. We will return in closed executive session after lunch. Uh, thanks to all of you who uh have joined us online. And I'll remind uh the members of the compensation committee that there is a meeting immediately following this. So you have to stay before getting lunch. Uh, thank you, everybody. I'll see you after lunch. Uh, welcome back, everyone. Uh, thanks very much for the discussion. Uh, our next uh agenda item is any other business. Uh, we did get one item of uh a request from the community uh to start to provide notice of board meetings to the community, even when they're relatively short uh board meetings which occur, for example, during the um the approval of the I B slate, which took place in January. Um, there is no objection as I as far as I can tell from the board to introducing that as a new uh practice. So we'll start with that. Uh, longer term, we may actually move to uh a slightly different system where we create an announced list uh that not only the board can make announcements on, but also uh the O Mac and uh the the chapters so that uh items of interest to the broader community can be uh shared there. This is somewhat similar to how the I T F uses its announced list uh compared to uh the working group lists or the the main uh I T F discussion list. Uh, so uh with with that matter dealt with my question to the board, is there any other business for the good of the order? Alona?
Just have the resolution that we revised for the governance committee charter.
Oh, great. Uh, would you uh read that aloud, please?
Sure. Um, so the resolution is approval of amendments to the governance committee charter. Proposed resolution varies. The governance committee recommends amending the governance committee charter to ensure that the governance committee broadly distributes the guidance to the I A B. Result that the board of trustees approves amendments to the to the governance committee charter is presented.
Okay, and that's obviously as presented after the discussion, which modified them earlier in the day. Uh, is there any other question about the resolution?
I would feel wow, I would feel more comfortable if we had it in text in front of us. Is it? Yeah, it's a little hard to process.
Okay, uh, so if if the board members who who want to see it uh could quickly log into Slack and read the Slack channel. Uh, obviously, it will appear in the minutes for for anybody who is uh reviewing this material post facto. Okay. Uh. Okay, does anybody need more time to review the text? Uh, Russ?
So the words that we discussed had to broadly distribute the guidance to the I B for informational purposes or something. And that's not here, which is I think really important.
Oh, that's because that text is in uh a different portion that's been removed, right?
That's that's my point is I think we want to make sure what goes into the resolution highlights out as well.
Uh, essentially, what's what's happened here is that whole section um uh is going to be in a in a separate later resolution.
I see. All right. Thank you.
Um, because the discussion of exactly what it ought to say, in particular around the petition process, did not conclude. Does that make sense? Uh, Charles?
I'll move the uh, if there's no more question, I can move the resolution.
Uh, okay, that has been moved in second. All those in favor of the resolution, please signify by raising your hands. Okay, that appears to be unanimous. Uh, thanks, everybody for that. Uh, having uh dealt with that, is there any other business uh for this afternoon's session? Seeing none, uh, I thank you again for your uh participation today. We are adjourned.